How that Ms. Can Crow and Ms. Perdue are both going to be about 10, 15 minutes late to the meeting this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. All right, so we're ready to go.
Yeah, just. We're live, we're ready to start.
All right. Like to call to order the May 19th special meeting of Methacton School District Board of Directors, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcast. Given the need to conduct this meeting in a virtual environment, the board required members of the public wanting to make comments on agenda items or courtesy of the floor to pre-register by five o'clock today. So we'll do attendance and then I will let the record reflect when the two board members that are coming in late have joined us. So Ms. Can Crow, I believe, is still not present. In case I missed her coming in, nope. Ms. Drummond?
Here.
Ms. Hall?
Here.
Mr. McGinnis?
Here.
Mr. Neverett?
Here.
Ms. Perdue, I believe, is still on her way. Ms. Reese?
Here.
Mr. Winters?
Here.
All right, and recognition of guests and scheduled speakers, Dr. Zerby.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, this evening, just for members of the public, there are two meetings back to back. The first meeting is a special meeting where there are items on the agenda for which the board may consider to take action. The second meeting that immediately follows the special meeting are matters that will be for discussion with potential action at the May 21st regular meeting of the Board of School Directors. With that said, this evening, we have the 2122 proposed final budget by Mr. Bicker and then a recommendation to the Athletic and Activities Health and Safety Plan by Dr. Spiewack. So with that said, Mr. Bicker will bring up the proposed final budget for the 2021-2022 school year.
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. Okay, next slide, please. Tonight, we're going to be given the proposed final budget for the 2021-2022 school year. Right now, we are in the May 19th meeting, which, at this point, we need to make a decision to adopt the final final budget and advertise for the adoption of the final budget, which has to occur by June 23rd, 2020. Next slide. So when we started the budget process, we had done our preliminary proposed budget, which had 68.34% of our budget being related to real estate taxes, 11.34% to other state activity, and 7.2% to Act 511 taxes. Next slide. So the budget at that point in time, when we prepared to propose preliminary budget in January, was $115 million dollars for revenue and $116.5 million budget for expenses, which gave us a $1.16 million shortfall on the budget. Next slide. Each month, what we did is we prepared an update and presented this to the board and/or the finance committee so that they could track the changes that were occurring. In February's update, we had a increase in real estate taxes of about $194,000, a reduction in revenue of $4,100 for retirement, and $25,000 for Social Security. Total changes totaled $165,170.68. Next slide. The March update incorporated an assessment increase of 420, almost $424,000. Millage changed to 2.768%, and we updated staffing as we do each month with regards to Social Security and Peasers based on the changes that were coming, such as in addition of a staff member and/or the retirement of someone being replaced by a different individual based on our settings. The transportation subsidy was also updated to reflect the 2020-2021 actual amount that we received. Interest income was updated to reflect the current balances that we are carrying, and a reach grant was received and based on the advice of the orders that was added to next year's budget, and we'll pay care of that on accounting fees. Next slide. Continuing with revenue in April, the assessments increased by another $4.8 million, which is very significant. That allowed us to reduce the real estate taxes by $143,000 roughly. The millage then dropped to 2.398, which was a reduction of 0.37%. Interest income was also updated based on current balances, and again, staffing changes occurred, which impacts the Social Security and Peasers. Next slide. For the proposed final budget, assessments decreased by $941,000 roughly. However, the millage increase changed to only 1.622%, which is a reduction of 0.776% due to the changes in the staffing and the other reductions in expenditures. Interest income was updated based on current balances. Staffing, again, changes Social Security and the retirement. And we also got our gaming funds, which reduced by about $14,300. Title I and Title II grants were also updated to reflect the current records that we have. What that gives us is a $114.5 million revenue stream for next year projected. Next slide. We're taking all this into account that the real estate taxes account for 68.18% of our revenue. Other state revenue accounts for 11.37%, and the Act 511 taxes account for 7.25%. Next slide. Now looking at the other side of the equation, so you have the proposed preliminary budget with regards to expenditures. Salary and benefits were 69.6% of budget. Operating expenses were 21.7, and debt was 8.6%. Next slide. That gave us the $116.5 million in the budget of expenditures that I mentioned before, again, contributing to the $1.2 million shortfall. Next slide. The February update gave us some changes, so we had salary changes of $155.6,000, reduced the changes of staffing due to retirements and increase of different staffing positions. We also got our first look at the medical, which gave us, or healthcare, sorry, which gave us a reduction of $117.7,000 on medical, a reduction of $28,000.1 in prescription eye care reduced by about $1,000 dental, $11,800. Social Security actually increased by $61.2,000, and retirements by $263,300. We also had some changes in the operating expenses. We had the reduction of the fuel costs for about $10,000, routing software $7,500. We lowered our legal from the preliminary budget by about $175,000. We have curriculum instruction and assessments. We decided to purchase the books that we're going to use for next year in this year's budget for $152,500 roughly. And we lowered our sub-costs, again, this is to account for the attritional savings that is mentioned. It is by reducing the subs, what we'll do is budget transfers from the salary and benefits of the staff that is not hired and/or is off, and we need to fill those positions with subs. We'll transfer that salary and benefit amount into the sub-line item. That was a $250,000 reduction. We've reduced that item by about $1,000,000, $1.1 million over time. Debt payments increased by $56,500 and $195,000 based on the final numbers that PFM gave us in that month of February. Next slide. For March, again, we had several updates. We had the staffing changes, which impacts Social Security Peasers and healthcare benefits. We had a second look, I'll point you to the percentages down below. We had open choice increased by 13%, open choice two by 15%, open choice three, which is actually POS, 14.4, and the open choice four is actually open choice three by 10%. We had prescription dental and vision stay flat for the base amounts that we were recommending. However, the 102035 plan did increase by 21.2%. We had North Monaco Technicur Center budget updated, that is updated with the lease removed. We also have charter school reduction due to the committing of funds to pay for the charter school, as well as technology lease finally coming in and getting the actual amounts that we'll be paying on the technology lease. The debt services then updated to reflect the payoff of the ESCO lease down below. That saves us, those two items save us about $273,000, $274,000. Next slide. In the April update, we had staffing changes, again, salary, Social Security, Peasers, and healthcare benefits. We also received our workman's comp assessment from SDIC, which is the consortium that we belong to for workman's comp, and that was a reduction of almost $20,000. I also did make a coding change difference, $3,000 from operating to increase the reduction to increase the debt service, and that's just a coding difference where the money was funded between a 300 series, 700 series, to an 800 or 900 series. Next slide. One of the things that we did in our next update was that we did have a reduction in staff of one individual, and that is a professional staff member, and that is due to the retirement of this individual. Next slide. Staffing updated for the proposed final budget include all the retirees and everyone that we knew about, any changes in staffing, which I just mentioned previously, and the effect of the Peasers, Social Security, and healthcare benefits with those changes. We did receive the third look for the healthcare consortium. You'll note that open choice one reduced to 9%, 2 to 9.64%. Again, open choice three is really POS at 9.2%, and open choice four is really open choice three at 2%. And neither the prescriptions or the dental or vision changed. We also incorporated tentative agreements with the Teamsters, Act 93, and the confidential's. Property insurance was updated based on the final proposal prepared by our insurer. And we have the social security costs increased by two individual staff members, and that cost is about $67,000. We also included the supplemental contracts for the Skyview and after-school music program. Next slide. This changes the distribution of the expenses to 70% for salaries and benefits, 21.1% for operating, and 8.86% for debt service and transfers. Next slide. Kind of reinforcing what are the changes that we did this year, just to bring everything back into the presentation. So some of the changes and to the budget that we did, we had $500,000 for the charter schools to be paid from committed funds. This is the anticipation of students returning from virtual back to in-person and/or Methacton's Virtual Academy. That, by committing these funds, we do not have to tax the taxpayers for these funds. There's also $400,000 worth of IT costs that we had to incur for one-to-one cost to be able to do one-to-one from K to 12. As part of this, we were able to purchase the items that we needed versus financing them, and by purchasing them, we do not have to pay the ongoing expenses associated with that. We already discussed the ESCO and the North Monaco Technicur lease payoff, that saved us about $272,000. We also discussed the CIA purchase of books. We lowered legal, again, by $175,000, and we lowered our substitute cost by $250,000. This saves the school district $1.75 million that we've removed from the budget in order to keep the taxes as low as we could. Next slide. So what does this mean that a homeowner? Well, one of the things that will change on this screen is that our average assessment value has increased to $174,400, so there's a little change there. Based on the 1.622%, that would equate to an $87.27 increase to the homeowners or $5,468.10 for the average home value. We did change the look of this presentation, I want to keep reinforcing this, that we changed it to be the values go up in numbers because people more associate with the values of their home versus the assessed values of their home, and so we take the assessed values and like line item number one, we take a $1,000 value of your home, that equates into about $47,000 worth of assessment, which would mean that your taxes would increase by $23.49, and your total taxes would be $1,472.1. All the way up to someone who owned a $2 million home, their assessments would be about $939,000. Would have, and my eyes are not that good, $469.86 worth of an increase, thank you very much. Our total tax of $29,440.19. Next slide. So here are some of the projects that we had laid out. Now, all these products are laid out and requested by the building administrators, but I think it's important to note, none of these projects will be done beyond the $150,000 allotment that is provided for these building projects. These are all the list of items that have been submitted by the building principals with regards to what they'd like to have done at their individual buildings. We work with facilities to accomplish as many of these as we can throughout the year, throughout, starting in the summer, and the effort is to make sure that the buildings have some sort of say in what kind of projects are done for their buildings. Next slide.
Mr. Bicker, I accidentally moved ahead to the end of the presentations, bear with me one second.
Up forward, forward, one more. One more. Okay. So one of the items that we had is we put in the historical revenue and expenditures. So back in 2017, 2018, our total budget was $106,751,700. We've now changed that up about a little less than $8 million over the time period for $114,542,982.29. I think it's important to note that the operating expenses have been relatively flat, as has the debt service. Two of the growing items that we do have in our expenses are salaries and benefits. Benefits are a function of the amounts of the employee's contribution, but more importantly, the experience levels and the costs associated with providing those benefits. Next slide. So one of the things that happens for the base of our salary, our largest group is the MEA population, and if you look at the distribution of the MEA population, most of our staff, for the good part, is an experienced staff. They're on step 16 of the salary staff, which means they have a good amount of experience with regards to the operations of their departments, their courses, and the operations of Methacton School District. Next slide. Our top 10 expenditures, then, obviously, professionals at about $34 million. Understand, they're also the largest group of individuals, so that would be expected. Retirement is $16.7 million of our expenses, and our insurance is $8.8 million of our expenses. Our annual principal reduction currently for next year is $7.2 million, and our contracted carriers, which is first student transportation, is about $6.6 million. Administrative salaries, 4.4, other professional services, 3.7. Social Security, another one, it's just a percentage of by due to salaries, $3.7 million. Our interest on our debt is $2.7 million, and our labor, AKA the Teamsters, maintenance and custodians, total $2.4 million, and all our other expenses total for $24.5 million. Next slide. So what we do each year is we give a five-year projection based on assumptions. Obviously, we take in the most recent labor contract agreements that we have available to us and the, I guess, the negotiating parameters provided by the school board. We have our third look on the medical, and all that information holds into how we look at our projections next year. Next slide, sorry. So if we have no increases in our revenue, so we have no property tax increase going forward for the 2023, 2026 fiscal years, and only a 1.622% for the 2022 fiscal year, at the end of that time period, we're looking at total expenditures outrunning our income revenue by about $8.5 million. Over that same time period, we'll have incurred a $13.9 million loss in our unassigned fund balance. Next slide. If we continue at the 1.622% and also factor in a 2.3% growth in the real estate taxes, we will then also incur a loss of about $600,000 to $700,000 a year over that next four-year time period. However, the unassigned fund balance will not drop below $5 million at that point in time. Next slide. You'll look and see that the salaries will be about $48 million, increasing to about $52 million at that point in time, where so Peasers will go from $16.6 million roughly to $19 million. That's 14.54% to 15.19% of our expenses. Medical will go from 8.8 or 7.71% of our budget to $10.7 million, or more importantly, 8.46% of our expenditures. Then you have the prescription and the other employee benefits. Overall, we have salary and benefits totaling $78 million or 68.1% of our budget to $89.1 million totaling 70.45% of our budget. Next slide. Showing this historically versus our actual numbers, our actuals for 2018, 19, and 20, we have a actual number of $106 million, $106.8 million of revenue, 110, 111.6. The budgeted for this year is $111.9 million, and we're proposing $114.5 million for the 2021-22 fiscal year. The expenditures have occurred at $104 million, $108.2 million, almost $108.3, $108.4 million, and we have the budgeted numbers, which are equal. The savings in the 2020 fiscal year, I think it's important to note, a large chunk of that obviously would be due to the fact that we shut down in March of last year due to the start of COVID. I do believe, and I have presented to the Finance Committee, a forecast for the 2020-2021 fiscal year of another surplus after the, before the committed fund expenditures for the North Monaco Technicur Center lease and the ESCO lease payoff. At the end of the day, I do believe that both of those numbers would be closer to a more balanced number had we not been dealing with COVID and/or making estimates and/or cuts in different changes to our expenditures at that point in time. Next slide. So this is the top 10 major objects. We have the 100 series, which is salaries, 200 series is benefits, those are the ones you're very common with, the 300 and 700 series. For those, that is what we consider our operating expenses, and the 800 and 900 series is our debt service. The changes year to year, in 18 to 19, almost 4%, 19 to 20, 0.16%, 20 to 21, 3.9%, and we're also looking for a reduced reduction for the 21-22 year to 2.46%. Next slide. Next slide, the PDE 2028, I'll just mention that, is provided and attached to the presentation for the school board and everyone to see. Next slide. So again, this is where we are, we're on May 19th, 2021. We had to make a decision whether to approve or not approve the proposed final budget. There are some changes that we know are going to be coming, and I think it's important to point those out. We do not know where the May end-of-month assessments will be. That will obviously change the assessed values, which in turn change the real estate taxes up-down, depends on which way those go. And we also have staffing changes. There may be other minor changes that come in that are brought to our attention that we make, but those are the large items that everyone can see and be aware of at this point in time. Next slide. We'll go through the next slide after this. So here's what's happened for the budget history, and this will be the last slide that I present for tonight. On January 26th, we presented the preliminary budget. February 10th, we presented to the Finance Committee a budget update. March 10th, another budget update to the Finance Committee, followed by the March 16th presentation to the school board. March 14th, presented to the Finance Committee, another update. All those are included in this presentation tonight, just to be clear. And on April 27th, we updated the school board again. On May 12th, we had updated the Finance Committee with this similar presentation. There are changes in additions to this, but it's very similar to that. The numbers did not change with regards to the millage increase. And tonight is when we're doing the presentation for the budget for the school board, and that'll be added post this meeting. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Bicker. This evening, as we said earlier, there is a vote to approve the proposed final budget, which, as Mr. Bicker mentioned, while we will have changes, also we'll be bringing the final, we'll call it the final, final budget to the Finance Committee in the meeting in June, and then for your approval in June as well. So questions from members of the board, Ms. Reese?
Dr. Zerby, I'm sorry, before we get into questions from the board, I just wanted to make sure that I updated the attendance for the meeting to reflect that we have Ms. Perdue and Ms. Can Crow. So if you could, Ms. Perdue, are you here?
Yes, I'm here.
And Ms. Can Crow?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Reese, you have a question or comment? You're muted. Ms. Reese, you're muted.
Pretty basic here, Mr. Bicker. And I'm going to ask Dr. Zerby to go back to screen nine, please. I just, I...
I'm sorry, which slide?
Nine, please. Sorry to make you go back all the way there. I just wanted to briefly have Mr. Bicker touch on this slide. I had heard some erroneous information out in the public, and it concerned me because if people in the public thought this, they would be upset, they would be upset with our budget. So I know there's so many slides, so it's hard for everybody to follow them. So I just wanted to review this slide, Mr. Bicker. So the erroneous information I heard was that most of our budget comes from the federal government, and I wanted to just reiterate to those who were unaware that it is 0.5%, I believe, which is $623,000 from the federal government?
That is correct. It's 0.54% of our total budget.
Okay, and then if someone was confused between federal and state government, the state government provides 11%, which is about 24 million? Is that correct?
Yeah, it also includes some other items. The other state revenue is 11.37%. Predominantly, the state revenue comes from Peasers and Social Security reimbursement, as well as the gambling refund to the school district.
Okay, thank you so much. And my last question is, are there any restrictions on that federal or, well, you just said about the state, that it's reimbursement for Peasers, et cetera, but is there any restrictions on that 600,000 the federal government gives us?
Yes, it's all title-oriented predominantly.
Thank you so much for clarifying that. After, after six years, I'm privy to this slide, but with 56 slides, I can imagine some members of the public are unaware that $90 million or 68% comes from local revenue. So thank you so much for clarifying that.
Thank you for your questions, Ms. Reese. Any other comments or questions from members of the board? Thank you for your questions, thank you for your question, Ms. Reese, any other comments or questions from members of the board? Ms. Drummond?
I just have a brief clarifying question about the building projects, the building level projects. That was, I think you said 150,000, is that total or just per school or just just to clarify that number?
That that is total, all the building products will not exceed 150,000 dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, Mr. Winters?
Yeah, I'm just gonna make one comment, but I think it's really key for people to understand. Through the contract negotiation and the the agreements that were made with almost all the unions at this point. The changes that are available for staff to save money and also the district to save money. By moving to an open choice from an open choice one that can cost $25,000 per family. To an open choice three that can cost 22. And most, almost all that difference goes actually to the staff member choosing to to make that choice. And again, I use the the example of it's a very good plan, no matter if it's open choice one or open choice three. And I I would equate the open choice three to a Honda Accord. A pretty good car and a very good program. And I encourage that the cooperation that's been done with the unions and the other labor groups. That they continue to look at this as a as a win win for both the district and the individuals for additional cash. There is the the $1,000 deductible that comes with open choice three, but the savings are well beyond that, so. The same thing for the prescription plan, the changes that have been made with prescriptions plans allows us to again to keep our costs. Under control and and also. For for the plans are changing, but also to keep the cost for the employee to be in reasonableness as well. So I I support this budget, I think the other slide that you pointed out related to the MEA's population. Really shows how well educated our our staff is on the MEA staff, of course. With almost all, but in this case, 39 having some level of masters. And then we have 100 and close to 150 of our 396, I don't know what the exact number is, 398, somewhere around. Staff members are on the top step. So you see, it's a very lopsided. Normalized curve, but it's really important for people to understand where our our staff is and how. Doctor, yeah, there you go. Mr. Bricker does the budgeting from the bottom up and making these individual selections at both. Step and column, but also in the expectation of the. The medical that changes, so my question for you, Mr. Bricker, not Dr. Bricker, Mr. Bricker. We had open choice plan, I think, for our employees in the month of May. Will the reflection, those be reflected in the final budget?
So the terms of the contract agreements that have been entered into are factored into this presentation. The proposed only open contract at this point in time is the MESA. Pending what goes there, that would be factored into the next one. Change, open enrollment, oddly enough, just opened today for the staff. And it takes about six weeks to get finalized, so we're going to be going through that. Those changes, while it would be nice to try and incorporate them. Time wise, it's realistically not possible to incorporate the current changes that are ongoing. Which is why we assume everyone stays where they are for the final budget.
Yeah, so Mr. Winters, just to clarify that, we have all the labor contracts and plans with the exceptions. Of the MESA in this current budget proposal with a 1.62% tax increase.
Okay, very good, so I I and. Although I'm asking the question, at the end of the day, I'm not sure for the budget purposes. The people that hopefully will choose in the long run for both the good of the district and also for more cash in their pocket. To go to do to move to an open choice three, then that cost to the district is really not changing much over there. The net cost to the employee is certainly where a lot of the reduction is in the first year or two. So I I'm just curious if we were able to incorporate this, but otherwise, thank you.
Thank you for those comments and questions, we appreciate it, other questions or comments from members of the board on the budget? Mr. Navarrette?
Yeah, thanks for this, Tim, the changes in in medical dropped a lot. In the third look, I mean, we're 500, 600 basis points in some cases. That's a pretty atypical.
No, it's kind of standard, the reason this year was a little little, it's not that drastic. The reason, and I hate to say this because I really was hoping not to. It's COVID related as to why the the numbers were where they are because the changes in the COVID expenditures. They were trying to hold off as much as they could to incorporate the most recent years to try and gather as much. Data as possible on the more recent and when they do the projections. And as everyone knows, you know, with COVID shutdown, no one was really getting elective surgeries, no one was going out and doing everything. So the second look incorporated made an assumption as to where it should be. With us starting to open up and starting to get back to a little bit more of a normalcy. They were able to take the more recent experience and project that out, and that's what helped lower that number.
Thanks, yeah, I don't want to downplay it, right, I mean, a 10% increase in our healthcare costs is, you know, is a huge increase. It's certainly better than the, you know, 14 or 15 that was being. Purported before, which is, I'm glad, I'm glad Paul spoke to open choice three because I think we need to continue to to push that out, I know that's a choice that my family is going to be making here.
And on that, if you look at open choice three, anyone up 2%? Our prescription, the base plan we're trying to get across the board did not increase. You've got the same you had last year, dental did not increase, vision did not increase. I also changed to open choice three, so I I do see the value in the plan.
Yeah, that's great, also, I just point out, I know it wasn't, it wasn't spelled out in your slides, maybe we can. And it was in a previous discussion that we had, but. You know, 1.62 increase, if that's where we end up or somewhere close to it now is the fourth consecutive year that we've been under 2%. We've been 1.98, 1.12, and 1.56 or 55 last year, I believe, and now 1.62 this year, so. That, I'm curious to see, you know, watching other. School board meetings because I have nothing else to do on my nights off from here, we. You know, there's a lot of school boards here that are really mumping up against that act one limit and finding some hardship, including some of our neighbors, so. It's a, it's been a tough road to hoe, and I appreciate all the work that you and Dr. Zerbi and the rest of the staff and the Finance Committee have done to to get us where we are.
Thank you.
Yeah, real quick on this slide, though, can you, can you correct the bottom because it looks like we were talking about open OC4? But the terminology on that slide.
Yes, I I will correct that, it must have been a carryover when I slid the line across. I will fix that on the slides.
Yeah, Mr. Navarrette, you make an excellent point, you know, in comparison to other districts who in our last check with. You know, somewhere, you know, but right in the same range as where we were with the tax increase, but many were at the act one index of about 3%. So that's a, that's an excellent point, so thank you for that recognition. Other questions, comments of members of the board? Seeing no other comments, we'll move on to the next item on the the agenda under guests and scheduled speakers. That is with Dr. Spewack and the modification to the athletic and activities, health and safety plan. And based on where the on the motion for the agenda, I'm just going to scroll down there just to read that so we understand what we're really asking for. And then we'll take any questions from Dr. Spewack. But it basically says approve all 712 methactam athletic teams and activities. As well as outdoor athletic facility use users. Based on the masking guidance for outdoor sports and exercise as determined by the Montgomery County Office of Public Health. To no longer require masking, face covering while individuals are participating in high exertion activity outdoors, i.e. playing sports or exercising. Dr. Spewack comments on on this recommendation?
Yes, just essentially what would be happening here, similar to what we did in our fall season. Nothing changes with regards to masking for anyone except for the athletes that are in the act of competing. Those athletes that are in the act of competing in any sport would be able to remove their masks similar to what we did in the fall.
And again, this is only for athletics and activities and the outside user groups that use our outdoor facilities. You may notice that there is an agenda item on the work session for discussion about other. Modifications to COVID-19 mitigation matters that we can discuss in the next meeting. Questions on this particular recommendation? And and just so everyone knows, the reason this is on the agenda, it's the earliest we could get it on the agenda for. The consideration for the modification to an already approved plan. And in anticipation of some of the athletic teams, which we originally had thought would be in. District slash state, you know, play, so that's why, that's why it's here before you this evening. Questions on this matter?
Dr. Zerbi, maybe I should clarify that that as we're in districts here. And eventually state playoffs, PIA has acknowledged that it is not the homeschool rule, so if we were to travel. Let's say tomorrow for boys and girls across like we are. It is feasible that one school would would be required to wear masks and the others would not, depending on how their. How individual schools are handling the situation, so depending on on the vote tonight would. Certainly impact those types of scenarios where both schools do not have to follow the same rules throughout districts and state play for spring sports.
Thank you for the clarification. Questions from members of the board on this matter?
Dr. Spewack just answered my questions, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reese, Ms. Can Crow?
So just to clarify, though, if they're on the sidelines, they have to wear their mask. I guess my only concern is with that heat as it's been in the 90s. And they're going into division like, so they have to wear their mask on the sideline.
That is correct, the verbiage from the county only indicates while in the act of participating in the in the sporting event.
Okay, what does the PIA double A say when they, when they discuss this, what is their recommendation?
The PIA has not taken a real stance on this other than to. To make it up to each individual school to make the ruling. And to make it very clear that you do not have to follow the host site's rules, that if the host site is uncomfortable. Playing a school that has different rules, then they must forfeit, forfeit the contest. So they have not taken a stance with with masks at all in in this particular change from the county.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to express my concerns when we're dealing with the temperatures like we've had today and those those children participate in in these levels. And not being able to. Show show social distancing on the sideline and not have to wear the mask if they can collect themselves and breathe correctly. You know, that, I think that, you know, that's my biggest concern.
Yeah, Ms. Can Crow, we certainly understand that and recognize that our challenge is. The modification that the county has given us allows for what we're recommending to you. Which isn't allowed right now by the Methactin School Board, so. Based on our previously approved plan, so that's why we have it before you to get at least this. You know, modification approved. It doesn't, it doesn't include spectators either. And and even though, even though, you know, there's other CDC guidance that says you can now, you know. There's, there's a lot of challenge with all this, I'm not, I'm not going to, you know, be before you right now and say that there's a, there's a. We're going to put you up to police 100% of all this going on and certainly not naive to think that, you know, our our fans are fans of. Of teams that we go play against will, you know, follow certain rules, I think. I think there's actually a lot of confusion and some of the articles that I've been reading suggest that there's confusion by. By people about what the rule really is and what location and and for what for what group. Our problem right now is for for sure that we we can't. We can't just arbitrarily make the change for the athletes on the field. And that's, and we know that we can, we're okay under the Montgomery County Department of Public Health making this recommendation to you, and that's why we have it before you. Are there any other questions on this matter? Seeing no other questions, thank you, Dr. Spewack. So then we go into, I'll turn it back over to Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. So at this time, I'll take public comment on our board action items for this evening. This is an opportunity for residents to comment on matters that are to be decided upon tonight as outlined on the agenda. We asked that you please pre-register to speak this evening, so. For those who have pre-registered, you'll have, if you could keep your comments to four minutes or less. And start by stating your name and municipality, so for those who pre-registered, please raise your hand if you'd like to speak. Okay, first I have Brian Earnshaw. Mr. Earnshaw, you are in whenever you're ready.
Brian Earnshaw, Lower Providence, first comment relates to item seven, suspension of board policy. I'll ask again, when does the board intend to resume in-person meetings and what will need to happen for that to occur? You're quickly running out of reasons to hold virtual only meetings, if you follow what's going on in the world in the state. Regarding the budget, I think it's important to note that this is the fifth consecutive year that the district will post. A multimillion dollar budget surplus, not all those surpluses are related to COVID. All those surpluses have been retained for additional spending, none's been returned to taxpayers. And I'll point out to Mr. Navarrette regarding the tax increase that Norris Town is past a preliminary budget with a 0% tax increase. There's another month to go in this budget process, and I think, I think the board can do better. One glaring item in the budget, there's a $200,000 budgetary reserve that has no spending tied to it, so it's really just a slush fund. Or a contingency, as Dr. Zerbi will probably call it, but that could clearly come out of the budget and save $200,000. This year's surplus, if you adjust it for spending pulled forward into this year from next, is really 4.9 million dollars. And I'm also negating the effect of a million dollar overspend in legal, which is, which is quite outrageous. And what is the plan for the current year surplus, is any of that could be returned to taxpayers? Or is it going to be retained for additional spending? Regarding the presentation itself, slide 15. I didn't see anywhere where the excess high school staffing has been addressed, I'm wondering when that will be addressed, if this year's budget or sometime in the future. Also, a schedule I received in response to a write to no request shows spending on substitutes in the 1920 school year was 1,61,000. Next year's budget goes up to 1.2 million dollars, I think that's something to look at and why that increase is happening. Regarding slide 18, the expenditures deferred or paid via committed funds. I think it's important to recognize, even though there's a celebration of taking 1.75 million out of the budget. None of that is really operational changes to save money. It's using surpluses, it's moving spending from one fiscal year to the next. It's paying off debt with surplus funds that have been set aside for Peasars. And reduction in legal costs with no plan how to accomplish that. So really, it's, I don't view that as real operational savings, I almost, you almost term it as budgetary gimmicks. Looking at the PDE 2028 file, what I need to look at would be special programs. 1200 dash 500, and the trend of those expenses increases significantly. 1.1 million in this year's budget to 1.5 million next year. Might wonder why that is and if any savings opportunities. In administrative services, personnel salaries. 3.3 billion in actual 2020 budget of 3.8 million at 2022. Why is administrative salaries grown by half a million dollars and can any reductions be achieved there? In central and support, other support services. Salaries again are going up dramatically, 50% increase over 2020, associated increase in benefits as well. And also, as I pointed out. You know, part of the savings that you're achieving in debt service is from refinancing that happened, which really just pushed the sureties out to later years to accommodate additional borrowings for our head. And then finally, in the budgetary reserve, the 200,000 that I mentioned, that should just come out, that's just, there's no reason for that. On 114, 150 million dollar budget to have a $200,000 reserve and you could probably reduce your tax increase a couple of points. And also think that by looking at some of these other items I highlighted, you'll likely find savings. And the one thing I'm curious is whether or not Mr. Bricker ever produced a salary schedule detailing by person that ties into the budget. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Earnshaw. Anyone else for public comment on board action items? Okay, Mr. Andrews, you are in when you're ready.
Johnny Andrews, Lower Providence, good evening. Looking through the set of.
Uh, looking through the set of slides that were presented, I see nothing whatsoever about the homestead tax credits. I don't believe they've gone away. And I I would like to have a a comment as to what those credits are on on a typical household. I think it's it's maybe a puny amount, a hundred or a hundred and thirty dollars, but I think that discussing the budget without mention of that is not the proper way to do it. And I I urge you to consider Mr. Earnshaw's comments carefully. He's a certified professional accountant. He knows his finances and he he respects uh integrity and should be heated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Anyone else? Okay, so with that, we will move on with the rest of our meeting. May I have a motion to approve the suspension of board policy zero zero six point two with specific regard to limitation on the number of directors participating electronically?
Reese.
Thank you. Reese and Navaret with the second comments from the board.
In regards to Mr. Earnshaw's, um, question, uh, I believe we're discussing in person at some point. I don't know if it was this week or next week.
Uh, yeah, I I want to make sure that I have all of our all of the details addressed and how we are going to be returning because there are it it's not as simple as just bringing everybody into a room and saying we're having a meeting. I want to make sure that we have everything accounted for. Um, and I hope to have a statement on that next week.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with comments? Okay, all those in favor? I.
I.
Any opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Can I have a motion to approve the ceremonial signing of the high school diplomas? Um, and authorize those school directors with a child graduating in the class of twenty twenty one to sign their child's diploma in the location otherwise reserved for the president of the Board of Directors?
Reese.
Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Purdue. Any comments? All those in favor?
I.
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 Motion carries nine zero.
So if we if we could, uh, with with that motion, uh, could we ask, uh, Mr. McGinnis and his daughter, oh, and his wife and his and his daughter, uh, to have that have the ceremonial signing, uh, for his daughter? So, Mr. McGinnis, I believe that you are in possession of a very important piece of paper. There you go. Excellent. And who are we signing the uh, the diploma for?
The one and only Danielle Faith Hollage. Beautiful mother Elizabeth. That's got me major points. And on a serious note, I want to thank the board president, uh, Kim Aubrey Larsonese for offering this to me. As I'm a fact and alumnus, this is a special thing. So I thank all of you for taking this time and allowing me to do this. So as, I guess, the temporary president, Kim, can I make more rules or is this just a? Okay, as temporary president. For the class of twenty twenty one, Danielle Faith Hollage. Thank you, everybody.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Drew, the rest of the meeting is yours. Carry on.
I warned you, no trade backs. And and Dr. Zerbi, tell Danielle she must go to the remainder of her classes and do well on her finals.
Yeah, that's only one of four signatures, Danielle. You're not off the hook yet.
So and earlier, uh, I believe this week or or it was last week, I my I can't remember when exactly it occurred, but Kim Aubrey Larsonese and I, uh, met with our two, uh, senior school board representatives. And I want to share a a quick, uh, video of that, uh, meeting. Hold on, we're watching it twice now. Hold on a second. Okay.
Yeah, we don't need it on loop.
Excellent. Uh, and that that was a a real good opportunity. I want to thank, uh, Ms. Kelly for organizing that opportunity. Um, and certainly I want to thank, uh, Mr. McGinnis and his family for taking advantage of that opportunity here this evening. And, uh, we we look forward to being able to do that, uh, for for all of us. And and Kim, you know, you did that for your child last year and and I I the same. So, uh, it's pretty extraordinary and pretty important. So with that said, uh, we can move on to, uh, the next item on the agenda.
Yeah, the rest of this is a little less fun. Uh, may I have a motion to approve the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two proposed final budget as attached?
Navaret.
Thank you, Mr. Navaret. Is there a second?
Guinness.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. Comments from the board?
I think there's a a few questions I think we can get clarified. Uh, I believe that my understanding is that substitutes cost is something we, uh, are anticipating needing to increase the rate of. I don't believe we've done any action on about, but, uh, Mr. Mr. Reginae, uh, provided some explanation of that at the education meeting. Is that part of the reason for substitution cost change in the budget?
There there is no anticipated substitute cost, uh, change, uh, to the budget. What Mr. Regina will be presenting in June is information that, uh, uh, will allow us to modify how we provide substitute services, which will allow us to re- reduce the overall, uh, need for that, uh, the expenditure. And that's why that's why Mr. Bricker was able to make those modifications in the budget as presented.
Okay, so what?
So his his presentation will not modify the budget.
Okay, so Tim, what would you do the differential then?
So we typically run into about one point seven million dollars worth of, uh, substitute cost. It does fluctuate on a down year, it would be one point two. But typically, historically, we've been right around one point six, one point seven. If you look at what we're budgeting for now, it's about eight hundred and fifty to nine hundred thousand dollars. So clearly, we've made that reduction to, uh, use the funds again from the salary and benefits for the staff that is not in and or sabbatical and or not hired and or attritional savings. And we do budget transfers into the sub-cost. And we've been doing that for the last two years now.
Okay. I believe there was some discussion about special programs, Tim. Is that, uh, I speculate, um, is can you explain that before I speculate? How about that?
Which special programs?
I believe that the reference was, uh, so there was an increase. Does somebody know the exact wording? An increase in special programs, I believe that would be reach, uh, for the sus- I suspect, no?
So re- reach originally was a, uh, through a grant, uh, we picked up some of that expense. There's an extension of that, which was picked up then by a subsequent grant. As those grants run off, we do have to pick up those costs with regards to the, uh, general budget.
Okay, thank you. Um, and admin salaries, uh, can you speak towards that? I know that there there has been a couple of, um, movements around with people in temporary positions. And obviously, we added assistant superintendent in this year. So, uh, can you speak towards that or Dave?
Well, we've added, we've added a a few positions and properly, uh, you know, staffed the, uh, curriculum office to support the main function of the organization. And and I guess, I guess one of the things that I I think is important, I know we we often hear public, uh, comments and people referencing things such as, you know, we're not, we're not doing this to cut the budget, that to cut the budget. While we are looking to not only be, uh, fiscally prudent in all the actions that we do, our our primary goal is not designed to cut the budget. Our primary goal is designed to provide the best programs and services that our community, uh, can, uh, provide. And and I think it's a difference in terms of the perspective that that needs to be taken, uh, and the and the perspective that we've been taking. All all the things that we've done, uh, in just in this year to go from a budget that was that was established to be, uh, greater than what we could raise in the three point, uh, three point O, uh, tax increase down to a a one point six two percent tax increase while still adding some of the the special, uh, additional reach programs by adding some of the additional, uh, science programs at the high school and and a number of other, uh, improvements. You know, speaks volumes to the work that the board's done, that the finance committee's done and and that the administration has done, you know, work with the teachers. So you know, I think we should be really proud of the work that Mr. Booker has done to 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 bring this thing forward.
Yep. And then, uh, the last question, I believe, Tim, you can, uh, answer related to homestead tax credits and how that's accounted for in revenue.
Um, the home stake tax credits get calculated upon the final number, so we can't provide that information yet until there's a final, final budget. Typically, that is based on a dollar threshold based on the approved tax rate. So after the final budget, I can give you that, but until then I cannot.
But can you just s- speak towards the the accounting for it and how it's it's not considered? And it's it's considered in the revenue stream, but doesn't necessarily ha- uh, highlight the exact amount for the taxpayer.
Sure. So that that is accounted for in the collection rate that we have based on the assessments. So if you take the assessments, you take the rate that gives you a number, then we have a collection rate, a percentage of what we pass that we anticipate to collect that would go for the unpaid. That would go for the, um, assessment changes as well as the homestead act. So it's accounted for in that collection rate.
Right, thank you.
Anyone else with comments or questions on this item? Mr. Navaret.
Yeah, I just want just to make the point about, um, there's a comment made about pulling expenses forward into the current year. Obviously, that's a that's a common practice in in every organization. And I'll just make the point that, you know, for things like textbooks that are are recurring expenses but occur on a three or four or five or ten year cycle, pulling those expenses forward and paying them off in the current year absolutely reduces our expenses in the following year and reduces the need for tax increases in the following year and absolutely puts money back in taxpayers' pockets. The same goes for paying down debt. When we pay down debt, we every time we have done it, we are paying down debt and we are reducing the debt load of this district. That reduces our debt service. That reduces the need for us to, uh, raise taxes in future years and absolutely puts cash back in people's pockets. Those those could be the difference between a one point six or a one point eight or a two point O percent increase. And while those are small numbers, they add up over time, right? Every tax increase is cumulative. So everything that we do this year to keep that increase as low as possible, keeps everybody's taxes low next year and the year after and the year after.
Thank you, Mr. Navaret. Any other comments from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor of the proposed final budget?
I. I.
Any opposed? Motion carries nine zero. And finally, I will take a motion to approve the, um, change to the health and safety plan for athletic teams in grade seven to twelve.
Reese.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Navaret. Comments from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor?
I. I.
Any opposed? Seeing none. The motion carries nine zero. And with that, we will move on to courtesy of the floor. Anyone that has pre-registered to speak this evening during courtesy of the floor, please raise your hand. May I ask you, keep your comments to four minutes or less. And again, introduce yourself with your name and municipality. First, I have Brian Earnshaw. Whenever you're ready, Mr. Earnshaw.
Uh, Brian Earnshaw, Lower Providence. Um, first, thanks to Ms. Reese and Mr. Winters for following up on my questions. I appreciate you two board members really consistently doing that. Um, response to Dr. Zerbi's comments on the budget. Of course, when you go from three percent down to one point six, easy to do when you start with an inflated budget. Just in the most recent round, four hundred thousand of costs came out just because you got a report from the healthcare consortium. And using surplus, I always go bring that down as well. So you really made no operational changes. Uh, I understand you add programs, but a lot of that tax increase decreased because of things that aren't operational. Now that gets readily apparent. Regarding Mr. Navaret's comments, I understand pulling it forward. My point in making that was, you know, if you show a budget surplus of three point one and that includes expenses that weren't budgeted, you really have a a higher operating surplus. It's simple math. And I apologize if you don't get that. Remaining comments I have relate to a couple of presentations that are coming up on the word section, work session. Regarding full day kindergarten, one thing missing from the presentation on the on the on the website is what are some of the cons relating to full day kindergarten or what are the drawbacks? Uh, there's many, uh, studies that are reputable out there that I encourage board to look at before making your final decision because they're not presented to you by the administration. Secondly, on slide ten, it talks about the financials and it shows a net new annual cost of two hundred eighty one thousand. That's a misleading number in my view. Um, the real cost of full day kindergarten is an incremental one point three million dollars. It's just that savings being achieved through the store program are being spent on this additional program. So just keep in mind that the real incremental cost of full day kindergarten is one point three million dollars, not three hundred thousand. Unless you're what Mr. Burger is going to present with respect to rights and no legal costs, there was some discussion of that at the finance committee meeting. And I received a copy of the presence of a presentation relating to legal expenses in response to a right to no request that is now posted on the website, but it's buried within the finance committee section of the website. Uh, and that talks to legal expenses. And it really shows a lot. Um, it it shows some positives. I will give you that. The special education, it's spending on legal expenses has decreased pretty dramatically over the four years presented. But one of the things that really has increased dramatically is the cost of spending on right to no requests. It went from one thousand five hundred seventy five dollars in twenty seventeen eighteen up to over six hundred thousand to date this fiscal year. It's it's just a substantial increase. And and I know that you've taken money out of the budget, but there's really no plan to address that. And nobody's discussed why those costs are being incurred. There's been discussion of appeals and losing appeals. No discussion of who's making decisions to to appeal, um, the ramifications of losing and and why are you appealing all these rights and no requests? And is that really contributing to legal fees? And what are you gaining? It it seems like you keep losing on these appeals. And it seems like you're trying to hide something, don't want to put something out there to the public. So this this needs to go to, it really needs to be addressed. Um, to spend one point two million dollars year to date on legal fees i- is just outrageous. And the other slide that shows is that two percent of local tax revenue, which Ms. Reese pointed out was significant, is spent on legal fees. And that has no educational benefit whatsoever. And there's been no discussion of of what's going to be done to bring these fees down. And I it's also concerning, if I was on the board, that this didn't come to light, at least from from what I know, until the April forecast review. You know, pretty much, you know, nine, ten months into the fiscal year to realize you're over a million dollars over budget on legal fees is would just be concerning that they come up before. Thanks.
Keep it, John Shaw. And next I have John Andrews. Whenever you're ready.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
John Andrews, Lower Providence. Over the past few years, there's been, uh, activity called Arrowhead Forward. Some people didn't know what that meant. And in talking to random homeowners, they were totally unaware of the Arrowhead project. Now today I went to a census website and found that Lower Providence's population is flat from 2010 to 2020. And they have yet to make comment as to the changes in, in the adjoining township of Worcester. Also in Lower Providence. They claim that 92% of their homes have internet. So the, the present system of transparency relative to major building projects. Even though 92% of the homes have the internet service, the, the present system fails. Maybe only a thousand residents in the township read the local newspaper that you advertise in. There are other local school districts that put out annual reports that are mailed to residents' homes. You rely on mailers to get people to find out what the election day date is and, and who you want elected. But for sure, the, the only mailer that gets to the township homes or, and the businesses, the businesses are also taxpayers is the annual tax bill. I think you should do a survey as to what would people like to be informed about the school district. Other school districts, as I may have mentioned, put out annual reports. This is all under the guise of transparency. And putting out mailers can, can get the facts out there. They can overcome ignorance. They can benefit the school district. And when the school district ends up with excess school facilities and high tax rates to pay for them. And that discourages young families from moving into the district. There's no benefit to that. So, you know, maybe you should put out a mailer saying that, that when, where you have the internet service, you can sign up for emails or something like that. And, and if you don't have the internet, you can get mailers maybe on a quarterly basis. The internet is not a cheap thing. It may cost a thousand dollars a year. You know, using the school district practice of, of going to new computers every four years. That's a, that's maybe a $300 a year expense. The, the internet service provider charges $30 a month. People have to, maybe people have to buy printers and paper. And so you need to do study as to informing the people that you're taxing.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Is there anyone else for courtesy of the floor? Okay. Uh, closing comments from the board before we adjourn. Ms. Drummond?
I, I just want to address Mr. Andrews' comment on the mailers. I was a part of many tours and meetings at Arrowhead and about Arrowhead. And Dr. Zerby, could you just remind us if and what mailers were sent to everyone's home to apprise them of this project?
I, I, I'm trying to recall from memory, but we've sent at least on two occasions for sure, postcards home remind, you know, informing families that the project is underway. There was a website that was cataloging all actions and discussions and communications that were sent home. We've also communicated with both township supervisor, not supervisors, the township managers and, and asked them to share information on the construction project with their constituent mailers as well. Those are just a sample of the things that we've done.
And, and just for clarification purposes, the mailers that went out, they went to, not just to district families, they went to the, to the district wide families, whether families that people had children in the school or
All resident homes.
All resident homes. Thank you very much.
Any other comments from the board? We'll have a more comprehensive discussion around the right to know process as part of the, the presentation in the next meeting, but I did want to address just a couple of things that, that this was not a a late coming realization that our right to know costs were increasing. Part of my concern, this is something that Dr. Zerby and I have spent a lot of time discussing in, in our one-on-one conversations and my personal concern is that I don't want to dissuade people from using the right to know process properly. I think it's an important function of, of our government that we are allowed to request and, and have access to documentation and and I, I don't want to dissuade people from using that the way that it's intended to be used. Unfortunately, I think that there are some abuses to the system that are happening and that's something that we do have to find ways to address. And a lot of the appeals that we have entered into are, are in looking towards avoiding setting costly precedents. And, and you know, we, we don't just enter into them carelessly and it is done with a good bit of thought and consideration. But again, we'll get more into the right to know process in our next meeting. So if there are no further comments from the board, I will take a motion to adjourn. Mr. McGinnis, reliable as always. With that, we will adjourn this meeting at 8:17 and reconvene momentarily. All right. Director Zerby, do you need to do anything on your end to make the switch over? Are we good to go?
No, we're ready to go.
All right. Then I'd like to call to order the May 19th, 2021 work session meeting for the Math Acton School District Board of Directors. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcast. Given the need to conduct this meeting in a virtual environment, we require members of the public wanting to comment during courtesy of the floor to pre-register by five o'clock this evening. Since we have no voting items, I don't believe attendance is necessary, but we do have all board members present. Recognition of guests and scheduled speakers, Dr. Zerby.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening we have a number of guests and scheduled speakers. We have Dr. Bruce Campbell. He's our consultant for the diversity, equity, inclusion efforts going on in the district. Dr. Campbell, I know you've been on the call awaiting to, to appear. So excellent. We have you with us and I'm going to bring up your presentations. Bear with me one second.
Good evening, everyone. As we're waiting for the presentation to go up. Hope everyone's well.
Okay. All yours, Dr. Campbell.
Thank you. So yeah, so Dr. Zerby asked if I could present basically where, where we are with the DEI work that's going on in the district. So I thought we would start off by saying where, where we came from and then tell you the rest of the timeline. So we've obviously had several meetings with administration. And when I say we, I mean me and Dr. Zerby. As well as the leadership team, working together with Dr. Zerby, we have created the leadership team for the district as well as the bigger diversity, equity and inclusion committee, which also has subcommittees. So there are five subcommittees for that group, as you see on the, the slide there. Curriculum, community outreach, human resources, professional development and student life. That group, which is 47 individuals and those individuals are students, parents, teachers, staff, administrators, community members and board members who make up that group. All work together to create the diversity, equity, inclusion community survey. If we go to the next slide. So that brings us up to this month, May. So once the committee came up with the survey, we presented that to Dr. Zerby for his review and approval. And then we also sent it to Ms. Amanda Kelly, who was in charge of putting that through the blackboard system. So that people could fill it out. It was delivered to the community on May 10th. And it's going until this Sunday at midnight. So usually it, it takes two weeks, but just because of the timing, it just made sense for it to go all the way until this Sunday. Go to the next slide, please. So that takes us up until, to next month, June, where we will have data from the survey. So the committee will be able to review the data from the survey. We've been asked to present the preliminary findings of that survey to the superintendent's cabinet in June. And then also the committee will be working on recommendations based on the data for the district. Go to the next slide, please. In terms of August, the, there's a couple of things. So one, that the survey results as well as recommendations would be presented at the administrative retreat, which I believe is the very beginning of August. And then that session would also be a working session with the administrators to work on the DEI work for the district in tandem with the district's strategic plan. So that's an important piece for this work. I also think it's important to, to just state that, that August is also when my contract ends for the district. But obviously there's continued work that would happen with the district. So the next slide. September, after the work around the strategic plan and the results from the survey and the recommendations all came out, there would be goals that would be set and an action plan for the district around DEI work. And then finally, the presentation of those goals and the action plan that the district has approved would be presented to the community. So I'd imagine that would happen at a, a board meeting, but maybe other meetings as well, where that information was shared. So that's all I have. I just, again, this is a timeline, not different than what I submitted when I first came on to the district, but Dr. Zerby thought it was important that I agree to share what that timeline looked like and then extend it on. So the district knew where the work was going.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. See if we have any questions for members of the board at this point. Ms. Reese?
Hi, Dr. Campbell. It's nice to meet you. I have not been personally involved because there's, it can only be so many cooks in the, cooks in the kitchen. So it's so nice to, to, to put a name to a face or a face to a name, whatever. I just have, my questions are not specific to Methacton necessarily, but I've been asked several questions from people recently about your work or just about DEI in general. So this is the perfect opportunity to clarify some of those questions I've been getting. So could you just give an example of what you mentioned recommendations? It does not have to be one that you think is from a fact, but what would be an example of a recommendation?
So recommendation could be that there is personnel that are specific to DEI work within a district. There could be recommendations on how the district would embed policies and instruction around DEI work into the classroom. Also around events that would happen that are not academic events, but there are events that are happening on campus within, within the district. Those are some like low hanging fruit, I think, question, example.
Perfect. And then when you said you, there would be in the timeline goals, what would be an example of a goal? And again, not in fact, in specific because we haven't finished yet, but what would be a goal example?
So a goal could be that within five years, Methacton just school district would be, well, yeah, it's not Methacton. So, but I'm just
Right.
Since that's what we're working with, that's what I'm going to use. Would increase the diversity of their staff by X percent. And then there would be bench, you know, with all goals, there would be benchmarks to obtain that. So there would be, I'm talking about an HR goal here. So that would be what practices and procedures are we doing as a district in HR to diversify our staff?
And then lastly, you mentioned an, an action plan. I suppose the action plan kind of combines the recommendations, the goals to see how we're going to do this over the next five years, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I've been very quiet on this topic only because again, like I said, so many cooks in the kitchen, but I just have to share that I grew up in Philadelphia and went to the most, one of the most, well, I can't say statistically, but of extremely diverse high school. Graduated in 1990. So don't do the math, please. And I myself thought, wow, I know all about diversity, equity and inclusion. And I am so looking forward to hearing what your work brings about because you know, we all need to learn more about this topic. And I am just so thankful for you and all the volunteers and all the members of the, the committees and all the, not volunteer, all the members of the Methacton staff that are participating in this because I'm looking forward to it as a parent, as a board member and as a community member. So thank you. Thank you, Dr. Zerby for having Dr. Campbell come. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Reese. Any other questions for Dr. Campbell? Ms. Purdue?
I just, first of all, thank you for being here tonight. I do have a couple of questions just because they've been brought up by people of the public in reference to our community survey that went out. And I wanted you to share your insight or provide insight on within the survey, we have some background questions. Can you provide reasoning why we will ask certain types of question in a survey of this capacity for the community?
Sure. Um, so it's usually, it's, so let me start by saying all the questions that are asked are typical questions that are asked in a diversity, equity, inclusion survey. It's to get a breakdown of subgroups. So usually you're going to be able to have tons of people that answer, but you won't be able to say like, oh, well, I don't know if these, if it's a whole bunch of students that feel this way or parents feel this way or staff or administrators and like we, even within like district staff, it's, it's important to sort of break that down. The other thing that I would say too is, I'll just put it out there. I know like some questions might be a bit jarring in terms of like, there's so many responses or choices that people can select. So one that I think comes up quite a bit is, you know, question around religion, right? So there's like, why would you ask that for a public school? Why are we asking about somebody with religion? So usually the answer that I would give to such a question, even though it wasn't asked, but is, is relevant, is the idea of maybe that would give us some indication as to why a certain population of our community is fasting or a certain population. Honestly, maybe doesn't care about a Halloween parade because it's not a part of their religion. So it's getting a, a bit of an understanding of our community.
No, thank you. And then one comment, um, not a question or, but it asks is, will we send out a reminder about the survey just because I know the, and it's at the end of it and we only sent out one communication about the survey. Will we communicate again like a reminder?
Yeah, Ms. Ms. Kelly has a schedule of reminders that are set to go out.
Okay.
And some of, some actually have gone out to different groups. So for example, I, I sent one out to the staff just this week.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Purdue. Any other questions for Dr. Campbell at this point? I'm sure he'll be back before you, as we get closer to, you know, using, you know, having some information. I'm sure he'll be back before you, as we get closer to, you know, using, you know, having some information from, from this audit and other, other information sources. So with that said, Dr. Campbell, you've been very patient with us tonight. I wasn't sure exactly what time we'd be able to get you on, but thank you so much. You're certainly welcome to stay with us. Or you can, you know, quietly drop off and we will continue to do our good work together. Thank you.
Thank you all. I will quietly drop off.
Next on the agenda, Dan Sacala from Fidavia is here to provide an update on the Arrowhead project. Dan?
Hi, good evening, Dr. Zerby. Good evening, everyone. Hope everyone's well. I have to do a couple of quick introductions. I know the property committee has seen both of these gentlemen. And I know we, we throw a number of individuals, it's probably about 10 of us working on the various projects. But with me tonight is Shelby Bonner, who'll be doing the presentation for Arrowhead. Shelby is the full-time person on site overseeing the project on our behalf, on your behalf. And also with us is Mr. Jack Ayers. Jack is handling the other three projects, Eagleville, Canopy and Pads and the fuel tank project. So Shelby, if, if, Dr. Zerby, do we have the presentation?
We, we do. And we're going to, we're going to show it now.
Okay, great. Shelby, thank, thank you, Dr. Zerby. Shelby, go right ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me. I'm just going to run through this presentation that we prepared for tonight. The basis of what's going on on site right now is the first part of the presentation. We're, we're, we're going through structural steel at the back of the bill, at the back of the building, of the new building. That's going to be building A, which will be the main classroom building. So you're seeing the columns being erected. Beams and stringers going across there. Decking is now being set for the second story floor. And that's going really well. They're, they're making the bolted connections. They got some welding going on and we're making good progress there. Next, the, the next big item that you'll really notice if you're out on the project is the concrete block masonry going up. Foundation walls, or sorry, the foundation block is being installed over previously installed concrete footers. The footers were just completed this week in, in hole. So we are now out of the ground with concrete and just continuing on with the masonry as we move up. Third main item is utilities are going in. We finally got Pico sorted out as far as relocating a gas line to maintain service to the existing building. Now we're, we're, we've already started the process of getting them set up for the new building because it was some, you know, there's a bit of a time issue for them. So we wanted to get a head start on that. We've already enlisted them, you know, to get them ready for that next service. Electrical and in walls, stuff inside the building is going on and they're, they're backfilling over that. And the new electrical main service to the new building was also installed. For the remainder of this month and into June, until we see you again here on the, on the meeting, we'll be continuing direct structural steel in building A and building B and building C will take place shortly after that. Concrete foundation block and exterior masonry will continue to be constructed underground and under slab utilities within the building footprint that not is going to include the plumber who is scheduled to start beginning in next week and will be, well, actually that finished up today. Finishing remaining concrete footers that were previously held up by a gas line. So that is done with. The budget, everything is in good shape there and we have no change orders to report at this time other than the one that was already approved at a previous meeting. And we also have no board action items to undergo at this time. Everything's looking good out there. Schedule was looking good as well. We have some items that are ahead of schedule. We have a couple of things that are behind schedule. We think that everything is going to be in good shape for meeting deadlines and, you know, the overall schedule. So.
Thank you, Shelby. Before we take questions from the board, just as a reminder, for those of you that are able, we have a, a tour of the facility scheduled for tomorrow. Questions from members of the board for Shelby and the Fidavia team at this point? Mr. Winters?
Yeah, I appreciate the update. I won't be able to attend. So I, there was a comment, I think, on social media today about what was going on at Eagleville. And I think it's really important, the importance of owner rep for us so that we don't end up in a multimillion dollar facade issue 10 years, 12 years down the road. So we appreciate your eyes on the project and making sure that we are getting the most for, for Mr. Jones and Mr. Bonner. Any, any issues around procurement costs, accelerating inflationary cost on steel or logistical costs of getting materials? Is there any risk for the district on any of these sites?
I'll, I'll take that question. And, and it's, I mean, it's any, anyone engaged in construction knows that that issue of procurement and escalation is pervasive everywhere in construction. Shelby or Jack, well, I can tell you on, on Jack's, on the Eagleville project, they, Jack, in conjunction with the KCBA team, did a great job of nipping it in the bud. You might've heard that there was a, a real run on availability and cost of steel bar joists. And they, they modified the design on the fly to basically avoid that issue and not have any impact on the project. So kudos to them there. But yeah, I mean, it would be dishonest to say we don't expect an issue because it seems like every week another issue is, is presenting itself to be dealt with. But I, I, I don't, you know, Kelby, I mean, Shelby and Jack, anything, candidly, anything that needs to be talked about or we, we fine?
I haven't encountered anything at this time.
Jack, I think we're fine. I mean, I, I see lumber's going up, drywall's going up, that type of thing. That, that, that happens every year, basically.
Yeah. And we, and the contracts you have are not sensitive to fluctuations in commodity prices. So we're okay. We're okay.
Right. Two last points. One, thanks for chain, making the change on the financials, the show, the change order, being the change orders we've approved. I think that was, came up in the property committee. Also, just for clarity, Mr. Bonner, you say building A, B and C, it's, it's probably scaring people to hear three buildings. You're talking about sections of the building. Can you just explain that really, please?
Yeah, absolutely. Not a problem. There, it is one building overall. And when we're referring to that, the A building is a section of the building near the rear. It's the two-story section that will have the, the, the overall classrooms. B is actually just really a corridor with some mechanical room functions to it. And then C is the gym, administrative and cafeteria up at the front of the facility.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the Fidavia team? Seeing no other questions. Thank you, gentlemen, for being on the call tonight. Next on the guests of scheduled speakers, we have Dr. Deb Uger, who principal at Woodsland Elementary School, who is to provide the recommendation, administrative recommendation for full day kindergarten. Dr. Uger?
Hi, good evening, Dr. Zerby and board members. Thank you for having me today. I'm excited to talk and give the final presentation on full day kindergarten and kind of sum it up for you where we've been and where we plan to go. So, next slide, please. So as Dr. Zerby said, we're here tonight to give you our recommendation. And as an administrative team, our recommendation is that you approve the implementation of full day kindergarten for all the fact and students, beginning with the 22, 23 school year. We've talked a lot about our strategic plan and the, how it aligns with the five tenants of the whole child and developing a full day kindergarten program that aligns itself with the full child will be able to benefit us and all the stakeholders here at Methactin. So I'll tell you a little bit about that as we proceed. Next slide, please. So back in January, 2020, I went to all the teachers in all the elementary schools and gathered information to see what their opinions of full day kindergarten were. And the overarching majority of our Methactin teachers are in favor of full day kindergarten. All of our kindergarten and first grade teachers, as you can imagine, are in favor. But it was probably 98% of all teachers were in favor of a full day kindergarten. In February, I published a website to, only to Methactin employees that could house all the educational research as well as information about social emotional learning, about play learning in kindergarten and about the change process so that they could have a reference point for all of us. And then in April, April 27th, we had a special board meeting where we went through all the tenants of the whole child, how to promote a healthy, safe, engaged, challenging and supported environment for full day kindergarten children. So we kind of talked to you about each one of those tenants and aligned it to where we want to go as a district. Next slide, please. In October, I gave a summary report to the education committee. But if you remember in October, we were doing a lot. We were trying to reopen school. There was a lot going on in October. So we decided that I would give another, another report to the education committee in January. And in that October presentation, you had, or yes, in October, you had asked me to research three different options besides a full day kindergarten. You asked me to look at a half day program that is provided by an outside agency. And what if we offer, offered full day kindergarten only to the neediest students? And then what is the full day kindergarten for all the fact and students? So as we went through and researched all three of these options, there were definitely pros and cons to all three of them. The outside agency, as you can imagine, is limited with the amount of people that we could offer that to because of parents having to pay for it and because of only being able to house a certain amount of kids in our building, needing the other rooms for the kindergarten as well. If you were looking at full day kindergarten offered only to our needy students, we, it begged the question of how do you identify needy? In this time, we have kids, I mean, we need to look at the whole child. So we're looking at kids who may be struggling socially. We look at kids who may be struggling emotionally and academically. So how, if we're not screening students this year, how are we going to identify those needy students? So we did meet with our legal team and came up with a plan of what it could look like. But again, the deficit being you're not reaching all students, we're just reaching the needy students. And then again, we had the option of full day kindergarten for all students. It was at this presentation that we, the administrator recommended a full day kindergarten program for all students. Next slide, please. So in April, just last month, Dr. Zerby presented to the property finance and work committee about how to fund and fit full day kindergarten into our programming and into our schools. And the nice part about this presentation, it was kind of like a culmination of a lot of work that we've put in for the past five years and goals that we've had based on, you know, including our students more in, and using strategies to get kids to stay in their classrooms as well as, as well as fiscally, how are we going to support a full day kindergarten program? So we're excited to see that we, we absolutely can afford a full day kindergarten program and be able to use staff that we have right now and realign them in other roles. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in another slide, which brings us to tonight, which is kind of the summary report. And then hopefully next week, the, you vote on full day kindergarten. Next slide, please. So when we looked at what value full day kindergarten has, we, we obviously focused on our students. But we also looked at the other stakeholder groups, our parents who now can work outside of the home and don't have to worry about childcare for their kids. We looked at the teachers, how teachers can form those relationships with their students. And they have way more time to get to know each and every student so they can individualize education for the students more. We looked at the district being more competitive. Right now, there's only less than five Montgomery County districts that do not offer a full day program. So looking at the benefit to all stakeholder groups, we really strongly thought that full day kindergarten was a positive for all our stakeholders. Next slide, please. So when we start thinking about what the program looks like, we can really focus on creating an environment that's healthy and not just healthy physically, but socially, emotionally and cognitively. We, we need to make sure that we are providing that safety for students and not just physical safety, not just being there for double the amount of drills that we have, but also creating a climate for our youngest learners where they feel like they can take risks, academic risks, social risks and emotional risks. We can produce an environment that keeps kids engaged. An important part of the research is all about learning through play. How learning through play is the cornerstone of how students learn. So developing a program that captures play, but structured play so that our teachers know what to plan and know what to look for is really going to be crucial in that full day kindergarten program. Also making all kids feel supported and challenged. We often, we past practice has been to be pulling kids out of a classroom to give them services. In a full day kindergarten program, we're going to be able to push into a kindergarten classroom because there's going to be double the amount of time. So we're going to be able to provide that support for students within their regular classroom. Next slide, please. If you remember on one of my presentations, I went and did the half day schedule versus the full day schedule. And what we, we, we wanted to see is how much time we can spend on the social, the emotional and the cognitive development of our youngest students. It's important to reflect on the fact that, yes, there are people out there that say that full day kindergarten may, may not be for every child. But the power of knowledge is that we can, we, we know why that happens sometimes because the students have attachment issues to their parents because the students aren't emotionally ready. And we can fill those gaps. So we can look at what, what kids may struggle with, with a full day kindergarten program. And we can design things to put in place so that we prevent those downfalls from happening. So if you just look at the amount of time, we can really structure a program that is giving kids many, many, many more hours in the day to develop socially, emotionally and cognitively. Next slide, please. So we, this is from Dr. Zerby's presentation where we're going to start the implementation of our SOAR program. And that is, has been a goal of us to focus on that mental health, to focus on, to make sure that kids are ready to learn because they're mentally in a good emotional state. That starts next year. So we are having a behavioral specialist at each elementary school. So that behavior, behavioral specialist can help us plan for those students who may need more support coming into a full day kindergarten program. For years, we've talked about inclusive practices. And because we are offering the SOAR program, we are able now to restructure some of our staff so that we can provide more inclusive practices. So in other words, if we have, we may have a special ed teacher designated at each school that works on that emotional and that connectedness of students. Well, now we have the SOAR program. So we have a team of people who can be looking at that. So as we look at our staffing, we can say, okay, we can restructure some of this staff now. And we can really align the staff to what the students need. We've heard from our teachers for years that it's so difficult to be teaching two different grade levels if you're a special ed teacher. Well, in this new model, that limits the amount of double, double grade levels that a special education would have, teacher would have to do. So the benefit that we have now is time. We have the entire next year to be looking at things like the schedule and curriculum planning and the materials and the distribution of materials and possible need for redistricting. We have an entire year to be using to make sure that we have a program that is successful. Next slide, please. So here's just a brief summary of the financials. But as you can see, because we are able to reassign special ed teachers, we won't need to hire the amount that Reassign special ed teachers, we won't need to hire the amount that we initially thought. And that we're basically down to hiring, you know, two, two and a half teachers and two aides. So that's where that little bit under three hundred thousand dollar cost is because we are restructuring. The current teaching assignments so that we can make it happen. Next slide, please. So like I said before, our benefit now is time. So if this does pass at the end of the month, if this does pass next week, we have. To think about how we're going to structure the next couple of months in making it the best transition. We have to look at the staff we have right now and make sure that we're offering PD. Make sure that we're talking to them about scheduling, making sure that we're talking to them about. The most successful approaches to doing the, to doing a full day program. Then you're looking at November towards the, you know, October, November, we're talking about the budgeting of it. What does it look like? How many supplies do we need in each of our schools? What other resources may we need to support a full day kindergarten program? Another thing we have to think about is shifting everything up sooner so that we have all the data beforehand. So instead of waiting until March or April to start thinking about staffing, we really should look in December and January. Who do we have in our current staff that may want to be a full day kindergarten teacher who's duly certified? So that they can go into one of those extra kindergarten rooms. So if we do that early enough, we'll know how many other contracts would open up. Next slide, please. Also registration, we currently don't do registration until the spring. If we start registration in January of next year, knowing that the the next September is going to be full day, we'll have a better idea of our attendance. And that's also going to reflect on what we need to do with the outside hiring. And interview process. And then if we, if we plan it correctly, then by next summer, all we're looking at is are our classrooms ready? Or is the schedule ready to support a full day kindergarten program? So the benefit of passing this now is that we have time to plan a great program. Next slide, please. So on the website, you will see that all the presentations that we've done so far. Are right here on the Mefactin webpage. You can click on that and find all the presentations since October two thousand nineteen. Next slide, please. So I appreciate you having me here today and just to finally wrap up that we really have done and been talking about this for years. But now, you know, thinking about where we've been in the past year and a half and how much kids. You know, how much kids possibly have not been able to socialize, not been able to go to preschool, not have been. Out of their house as much as they typically would be at three years old or four years old. A full day kindergarten program opens up the world to, to these kids and to these families. So thank you for listening and that's all I got.
Thank you, Dr. Yooker. Thank you for your leadership over the last year and a half, possibly two years for bringing this full circle to the board. I hope that, you know, if if it is passed next week. I just want the board to know that we will make Dr. Yooker the lead administrator on the implementation of this project. Certainly working with the curriculum office and the supervisors and. Doctor, Doctor Walsh and the rest of the administrative team, but but having Dr. Yooker be the lead on the project. So with that said, let's open the floor to any questions for members of the board at this point. Any questions for Dr. Yooker? Ms. Drummond?
Thank you, Dr. Yooker for this. I just, I have a couple. You know, to a previous speaker comment about drawbacks to full day kindergarten. I guess, you know, what, what do the studies show about that, if anything? And, and I guess, you know, parents can still choose to have an alternate kindergarten arrangement for their child at that age and then. Rejoin, you know, and join the district in first grade, correct?
Correct. Well, no. I mean, if you approve this, not here, it wouldn't be. If you approve this, it would be a full day kindergarten program.
Right, right. But they could come in, but like, yeah, they don't have to, they're not compelled to have kindergarten here.
Correct. When you look at the cons, when you look at the research, it is all about the social emotional piece that some kids just aren't ready. Some kids are too attached to their parents, but like I said before, if we know that and we can see that in the first couple of days of school. We can use our behavioral specialist, we can use our school counselor. We can set up like individual programming for these children. And it is a very, very small percent of children that that go through this. So we can be proactive, knowing that that's where they are. You know, is is just giving us the power. We will have the resources to handle that for kids. Would it hurt kids if we didn't address that social and emotional piece and they were, you know, they have those attachment issues? And they have that fear and that anxiety. If we didn't address that, sure, sure, then you're going to see a kid who's hate school and not ready for it. But, you know, where we are in Mefactin and how much we focus on the whole child and being able to support that child emotionally. I don't foresee there being any issues.
And I do want to thank you for that, the emphasis on the social emotional learning. Because I know that in in past presentations, going back a couple or several years that we have been, you know, talking about that a lot. That when this was first presented to us, we really emphasized, you know, our desire to see that as a large component in this. So thank you. And then just a kind of a quick question is, I I guess then the the students who are there all day, then they'll be able to. Take part in the why after care if if that's offered at the school, I mean. So then that would be offered to all the grades.
Yeah, they would be involved in everything that has to deal with the school. And recess, everything, they'd be involved.
So then working families could take advantage of that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Drummond. Ms. Purdue?
I just have one. When we talk about the social emotional component of it, and maybe some kids that may have. May want to be with their parents, do you feel like with full day kindergarten and half day kindergarten? Is there a connection with some case having an issue with transitioning into a full day kindergarten program? And I guess in respect to a half day kindergarten program?
So you mean if they were halftime before they came?
Well, no, not halftime, but just in general, right? Like, we're currently now providing a half day, a half day program to AM PM. But have you seen, just because I know you've provided us binders with extensive amount of research. And I'm just wondering, have you seen where there was any studies maybe indicating that? Some kids just feel better in a half day program or, you know, with the transition, some kids just have a harder time transitioning into a full day program. And and easier to transition to a half day program?
Yes. To answer your question, yes, we have, but what the research doesn't tell you is what you can do to prevent those things from happening, right? So if we know that, and if we know that some kids may have attachment disorder, some kids may be, you know. Introverted to the fact that they're not opening up, then we can, we can put things in place right away. Instead of just focusing on the cognitive development. There's no research out there that says that kids are not ready to learn the emotional and social skills at five years old. They absolutely are. It's, if that's our emphasis, then that's how we're going to solve that problem. We have, we'll have that behavioral therapist there that will be able to work with the family as well as with the child. We have our school counselor and we have an amazing kindergarten staff. So I don't foresee that being a problem. And again, the amount of kids that we're talking about that may go through those attachment disorders are very, very small.
Doctor, you're just to piggyback on that, are are you saying that really what the social emotional aspects will do will prepare the children to be ready to learn? As they enter first grade, which is is the most significant matter. So that when they're hitting the, 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 the grades one, two and three, they've already got that fundamental basis of being prepared. To learn and socially, emotionally, ready, ready to take on those challenges.
Correct. I mean, it's a risk taking. I mean, we're not making a watered down first grade. We are focusing on what a five-year-old child needs socially, emotionally and cognitively. So that when they are in first grade, they're the best first grader that they could possibly be. And that's what full day kindergarten allows us that time to focus on that. Right now, I mean, it used. It's, it's difficult to get a lot in in two and a half hours when you have fifteen minutes of recess, a half hour special, twenty-five minutes of team time. You know, you're, the classroom teachers left with such little time to focus on individual student needs. And that's what we want our kindergarten teachers to do, be focusing on that child. So that when first grade comes, I'm ready to read, I'm ready to write, and I'm ready to learn.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Yooker. Other questions for members of the board, Miss Reese?
Real quick, I have just, thank you for saying that, Dr. Yooker, because we've talked about that in the past. But I think the point that you just made is what many of us have brought up before. That kindergarten in two thousand twenty-one in two and a half hours, it's, anyway. So thank you, because that's, I think, the biggest point. I just had one question. You had said five districts in Montgomery County did not have full day kindergarten. And I'm not asking you to name all five. I'm not, and I'm not asking to put you on the spot. But a lot of times we focus on our neighboring districts and we focus on our. The North Monco Tech sending districts. That's what we know. We've talked about, you know, in a lot of meetings. So I would guess neighboring is Springford does not have it and and I believe maybe PV.
PV does not. So those are your neighboring that.
Okay. And then I know North Penn recently added it, and that was a real push. Because I know we've been talking about it. We were like, okay, if North Penn can find this, you know, so, okay. So that's, that's helpful. And I believe Wissahickin does.
Yep. Upper Marion does. One of the Morelands does not. Jenkin Town maybe does not. I mean, I don't have it with me right now, but there, we are, we were just one of five.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Miss Reese. Other questions for members of the board? Mr. Winters?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Yooker for this. It's very good. I do, I'm going to make a comment here that. I'm certainly supportive on all the reasons that we're doing this, and I think. We're doing it for the right reasons. It sets up well with our strategy and I think it's the right thing for the, the children. And that's the most important, for sure. Somebody's going to say this is a one point three million dollar cost that we can't afford. And I, I think Dr. Yooker's point about setting the stage and and setting where we are. It's, it's a relatively small investment that probably will pay for itself in future interventions and suit. Special need requirements. It may, we may have more discipline issues, less discipline issues hopefully going forward. So there's a lot of benefits and I I hate for it to be advertised or characterized, I guess. As a one point three million dollar expense, because I really believe this is the correct thing to do for the students. But also fiscally responsible thing to do for the long run for the back in school district.
Well said, Mr. Winters. Other questions, Mr. Navarrette?
Yeah, I just wanted to piggyback Paul and Andrea really hit what I was going to go for there too, the fact that, you know, we think, we shouldn't say think. We are leaders in the county in a lot of different ways, right? What we've done particularly on the mental health front. In Mefactin is really setting the stage for everyone else. But the way we have not adopted full day kindergarten here, particularly relative to the rest of the county and our neighbors. Puts us at a competitive disadvantage, right? When families, when young families decide where they want to buy a home. This, quite frankly, gives us a leg up over Springford. It gives us a leg up over PV. And when Paul talks about all the ways that this pays out, if you want to look at the financials of it. When we make our community and we make our school district more attractive. To to new families and new buyers. That improves, that increases the likelihood that people want to build homes here, that they want to buy homes here, that they want to improve homes here. That's good for everyone. That's good for our property values. And in turn, what that does is that drives up. All those new, new construction drives up assessed values, drives up our tax revenue, which keeps everyone else's tax revenue that's already here low. So there's a lot to like, there's a lot to like about this for our students, for our community as a whole. I'll be very happy to support this next week. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Mr. Navarrette. Well said. Other comments from members of the board on, on Ms. Hall?
I just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Yooker. There have been so much research that has gone into this, and I actually pulled out my big green binder that we had dropped off. I went back through that and reread some of the articles and just want to say thank you because you did so much work on. The benefits of play, the power of play, play-based learning, the benefits of exercise and, you know, drawing out the minutes that would be benefited in each subject area. So I just want to say thank you. This is fantastic. I look forward to voting for this next week.
Oh, thank you.
I'm going to be rude and jump right in and say ditto what Mary said. That's what I want to say. I want to express my gratitude to you, Dr. Yooker. For keeping this on your plate and your extraordinary leadership at Woodland through this disaster of a year. We're lucky to have you. So thank you very much.
Thank you. That was kind. Thank you very much.
Ms. Hall, Mr. McGinnis, well said. Thank you both. Ms. Aubrey Larsonese?
Yeah, I'm kind of chiming in with more of the same, but I I also want to say that as a parent, I had a lot of reservations about. Full day kindergarten when we started these conversations, because I'm not certain that it's something that I would have wanted for my children when they were young. But seeing the, this has got to be one of the most comprehensive proposals that I have seen since I've been on the board. And this puts my parent mind at ease, but it also puts my board member mind at ease that this is absolutely the, the direction that we need to be going as a district. It's, it's what's good for families. It's what's good for the district. The emphasis on play and not making this into just, you know, another version of first grade is. Particularly what has won me over. The, the importance of play at that age is huge, and I just appreciate. All of your efforts and and the fact that you were able to continue to move this ball forward through this past year with everything else that's been thrown at us. It's very much appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Any other comments from members of the board?
Thank you. Everybody's saying thank you. You know, I think you're fantastic. I am for this from the beginning. It is fabulous. So I have to chime in. Everybody else is saying thank you. Thank you for all your hard work. I think it's going to benefit everyone. All the stakeholders and the children are the most important focus. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Kankro. Anyone else going to jump in? All right, here we, all right. Thank you so much, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Yooker, for your leadership on this. And you, again, you're welcome to stay on the call or drop off, spend some time with your family after, you know, being on for these, these two meetings. But certainly, we'll, we'll ask you to come back for any final questions at the voting meeting on next week, okay?
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you, everyone. I thank you for such the kind words.
And Davis says good night to Dr. Yooker. He wanted to jump in.
Good night, thank you. A hug for me, come on. All right, have a great night, everyone. Thank you.
Next, on the agenda, we have the Act Ninety-three Teamsters Confidentially Exempt Employee Contract Summary. So bear with me, we're going to have Mr. Bricker and Mr. Regina provide that information.
Thank you, Dr. Zerby.
Bear with me one second. This is it, yes, okay, got it.
Great. Thank, thank you, Dr. Zerby, and good evening to the board members. Just a quick summary of what this presentation will show. As many of you know, we have currently completed these, the last contract negotiation with Teamsters. Two compensation benefit plans for Act Ninety-three confidential. Earlier this year, we did ratify our teachers' contract and we are currently still completing our MESA contract. So hopefully, if all goes well, we'll be looking to complete five different documents here throughout this year. The three collective bargaining agreements and two compensation plans. So obviously, a major thank you to the board committees that were part of this process. We have an opportunity to speak with and thank the MEA group. Tonight, certainly want to recognize our Teamster group, Mr. McGinnis, Mr. Navarrette and Ms. Kankro. Were vital members of this process and I want to thank them for all their hard work throughout the negotiations. Also for our Act Ninety-three and confidential exempt compensation plans, President Larsonese, Aubrey Larsonese and President Drummond, Vice President Drummond. Again, thank you so much for your hard work and working with us on these. When we get started tonight, we're going to be proposing the financials for all three of these. One, we will consider the term contract. The other two are considered compensation benefit plans. So the Teamsters contract, we'll go over the financials and language, mainly the, the hot topic language items that were. So the Teamsters contract, we'll go over the financials and language, mainly the, the hot topic language items that were either removed or added to the agreement. And then the other two will be the Act 93 agreement, financials and language, and of course confidential and exempt financials and language. And without further ado, we'll turn this over to Mr. Bricker to discuss Teamster financials.
Thank you. Tonight, what we want to do is, Mr. Regina stated, we're, the salary will be based on hourly pay starting July 1st. This is a changeover. It'll be 26 pays versus 24 pays. The Teamsters will also revert to that 26 pay schedule. Unlike prior years when we had the 26 pay schedule, which was a salary type based pay schedule, this will be hourly based. Salary increases over to four years or two and a half percent. We include PJs and social security. The rates are 2.68, 2.79, 2.71 and 2.70%. Next slide. One of the other things that we had would be, from the financial point of view, would be the healthcare. As you noted in the budget presentation earlier, the healthcare has been increasing 9%. All new hires on or after July 1st will be eligible for open choice three only for the Teamsters. Effective July 1st, 2021, the prescription plan will be changed to the 152540 plan. This is the largest participating plan within the Montgomery County Healthcare Consortium. And retirees will only have open choice three and 10, sorry, the 152540 RX plan. As you can see in the chart below, prescription plans, the medical contributions will be changing 18, 19, 20, 20% for open choice one through the eight, eight, nine, 10 and 10 for open choice three. RX dental and vision will increase 1% each year. Next slide. Mr. Regina?
Thank you, Mr. Bricker. As you can see, there's a, from Mr. Bricker's slides, it is a four-year agreement. Some of the topics, major language topics that were addressed in this ratification. The first was the discipline revision. One of the items in the contract required the administration to reach out to the association within 10 days of receiving information based, something that could result in discipline. One of the concerns, of course, are items in which we, whether it be by state, federal or criminal investigation, we can't necessarily notify individuals within that timeline. So we did add some language to increase this to 20 days and that, of course, is waived completely if there's any investigation pending. The second was an unpaid leave provision, unpaid leave provision that was in the Teamsters contract. Basically would give an additional 30 days of benefit coverage to an individual that would go on unpaid uncompensated leave outside of FMLA approval. So for instance, if an individual had utilized all their FMLA, they would still receive benefits at the current contribution rate. But in the Teamsters contract, beyond that, they could go into an additional 30-day benefit paid option. And that has been, that will be sunsetting at the end of this contract. So that will be something that is eliminated. The next item is a probationary period for new hires. The current, or well, actually, the current probationary period is 30 days. We have extended that to 45 days for probationary period with the option to extend that for an additional 30 days if the administration feels that it's necessary to extend. The next item would be tools. We did have language in the existing contract that would provide a stipend to our master mechanic and mechanic employees for them to purchase tools. And then those pull, those tools were, would be their tools that they would use for work, but would be their own personal tools that they would be able to use and take with them. We had removed that from the contract and the district purchasing tools, and they will stay in the ownership of the district after June 30th. And finally, the uniforms language, uniforms language was something that was added in the last contract. What we've done now is added a third anniversary date. An individual could replace the required uniform if they have so many copies or substitutes of that for an item that's an approved district catalog, such as a winter jacket or, or the like that has been approved that they might be able to use beyond their third anniversary. Those are the main, major language items for Teamsters and we'll move over to the Act 93 for the financials to Mr. Bricker.
Act 93, some of the different changes with regards to the financial ramifications of the compensation plan is the increases based on the ratings, unsatisfactory, 0% increase, satisfactory, 1% meets expectation two and a half and exceeds expectations 3%. There's also the employee share of contributions. They'll be flat next year at 17, 16, 16 and six and a half percent would be, actually be a drop for open choice three with an increase of 1% each year for open choice one, two and POS with a half percent increase on open choice three. And RX dental and vision will be increasing by 1% each year. Next slide. Ms. Regina?
Thank you, Mr. Bricker. As you see here, it's a compensation plan for Act 93 members. The, the basic difference is, as you know, your collective bargaining agreements are an item of bargaining and negotiations. The compensation plans is a meet and discuss meeting amongst either a board and administrative representation to the respective committee leads of the Act 93 group. Of the major language items, you'll notice this is a three-year plan. We have extended the annual vacation payout. They currently receive eight vacation payout days. That has been extended to 10 vacation payout days. There's been a sick day payout upon retirement revision. So we have increased the sick day payout by $5 for individuals. And that's a, would now be increased to 105. If an individual has given us six months notification on their retirement, we would increase that by an additional $5 a day for the sick day payout. This is very similar to the type of revision we made in the MEA contract. When based on notification of retirement, we would then increase the sick day payout, which will certainly allow the district to replace them and be able to look for qualified applicants in a meaningful amount of time. Ultimately, the one item that is being removed from the Act 93 contract is the short-term disability provision, which was offering the administration 45 days of short-term disability for each year of service up to a total of 270 days of short-term disability. The next item will be the confidential and exempt proposed plan for the financials. Turn it back over to Mr. Bricker.
Very similar to what you saw with the Teamsters, the confidential and exempt proposed plan includes a two and a half percent increase each year. The numbers will look very familiar, 2.68, 2.79%, 2.71% and 2.7% for PJs and social security factored in. We have the plan design changes, which would be 17 and a half, 16 and a half, 16 and a half and 7% increasing by a percent each year for open choice one, two and POS and a half a point in open choice three each year. The RX dental and vision will get a half a percent increase in the first year and then 1% each year thereafter. Next slide. And now I'll turn it back over to Mr. Regina.
Thanks, Mr. Bricker. As, as some of you may know, the confidential exempt group is our smallest group. It's also our group that you would consider to be at the largest risk within the school district. And what I mean by that is most of our groups, the majority of our employees are covered by a bargaining unit. They have association representation. They have rights within that bargaining unit to retain employment or potentially bump or move to different positions. As you know, our Act 93 does not have a bargaining representative, but they do have provisions for those professional employees within school code that allows them to move back into MEA positions, provided that it would fall under 1125.1 of school code, which would be for any furloughs of positions. They would be able to bump teaching positions that would have come after their employment in the district. This group has no protection, as we've discussed. They are nine employees that exist as confidential or exempt employees, not able to participate in any of our bargaining units. And these employees have no, no protection of that sort. Attracting individuals to these positions have been rather difficult. These positions in the past have actually been paid even less than some of our bargaining unit positions within the MESA agreement. So it was important for us to make some revisions to this document to be able to entice some of our more experienced staff that would be qualified for a confidential or exempt position to attract them to these positions. We didn't want to quite go the, the entire route of what we do with the Act 93 agreement, but we wanted to add some increased benefit. The three major ones that we looked at, one was an annual vacation payout and rollover. The vacation payout will be five days of vacation payout. And they'll be able to roll over five days from year to year. There will be no banking. So they won't be adding that on year after year, but they'll be able to roll over five each year. As many of you know, in our Act 93, we have a three-year salary adjustment where the superintendent can look at the county averages for specific positions and make a recommendation to the board to adjust a salary to be more competitive in the county. This was not something that currently has existed in the compensation plan for exempt and confidential, but it is something that we're looking to add to it at this moment in time. And ultimately, vacation days for new hires, this was the one group that did not receive vacation days. They had to earn them after a full year of employment. We put them on the same rotation to be prorated, prorate a number of 10 vacation days within your first year. So obviously, the simple mathematics, if you came halfway through the year, you would receive five vacation days for that first year. As many of you can, can see, the compensation plans are both on a three-year plan, which will put them on the same cycle as our MEA agreement. And our Teamsters is on a four-year cycle, which will put them at the year after the MEA confidential and exempt and the Act 93s. And I believe that ends the presentation. Thank you, Dr. Yoker.
Thank you, Mr. Regina and Mr. Bricker. Questions from members of the board on any of the three groups? The, and just so everyone is aware, the, the Teamsters agreement is posted to the website or to this agenda. The other two redlined plans are, have been submitted to the board for their, their input and review. And once I receive feedback, I'll, I'll post them for the agenda for probably, it'll, it'll go live at seven o'clock on, on Saturday evening. So the questions from members, members of the board. Seeing no questions at this time. Thank you, Mr. Regina. Thank you, Mr. Bricker. Next on the agenda, we have the MSD legal expenditure presentation. Mr. Bricker?
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. Tonight, we're going to be a presentation on the legal expenditures for the school district. Next slide. So over the past couple of years, I wanted to point out the changes in the legal fees that have been going on. Using just the totals for now, 2017, 2018 went from $433,000 roughly to this year, which we're spending about $1.24 million. Obviously, that's a almost three times the amount and a significant increase. So we look at where that's coming from. You have our general legal fees of $106,000, $107,000 in 1718 that are about $57,000 and so forth with the assessments and the other items as we go down through those. I'll let you know that when looking at these things, these items, these totals are through April 30th, 2021, based on what's been paid to date. I think that's important to note that it's, what's been paid to date. The cost that we really want to look at is the right to know has increased 39,338%. And the general legal has conversely reduced by about 46%. And special education has reduced by about 38%. The assessments have gone up and that's really just a factor that Shannon Dell has now gone into trial cases at this point in time. So obviously, we anticipate a large ramp up as we have an unusual event this year with regards to trial cases. Next slide.
Yeah. And before we go on, I just want to make a clarification. So as we go on, you're going to see some numbers. And the key aspects of those numbers is understanding that there's a paid number. And then there's a billed number. So, so Mr. Bricker will be sharing slides that say billed to date and slides that say paid to date. Our, our intent was to provide the most accurate and current information possible so that everyone understands where we actually are in this process. So I just want to make that clarity.
So when we look at our, the standard legal costs that we would anticipate year to year, we have general legal assessment, right to know and special education. As mentioned, and you can see in the chart, the assessment and the right to know costs are increasing significantly versus prior year runs. Right to know has been increasing for each of the last three years. Special education has been reducing and then remaining flat. And obviously, the assessments, as I said, this year we are in litigation with Shannon Dell. It's anticipated that those costs would increase. Next slide. So what are the legal costs due to the homeowner? What percent of this would make up if, if we took it all from the real estate taxes? What would this make up? So the right to know accounts for 1.1% of our, of our cost for real estate taxes. All other legal expenditures, including the assessments, is 1.09%. So it's almost a fifth, it's 50% of our legal cost. Our total legal costs amount to 2.919%. When you look at the, what that does, the right to know on a $250,000 house, it's $39.79 of the legal costs are associated with right to know. And conversely, if you go across the other legal cost would be 39.37%. Again, 50% of our costs. Next slide. Examples of right to know typically, our typical right to know request seeks information of items, documents, contracts or listing of items. A non-standard request have 30-plus search items or items of a single request requiring significant additional scrutiny. And at times legal support items that seek communication between and among administrators and the board. An example of a request, the district for a period between August 10, 2020, November 30, 2020, spent a total of $335,975 on a right to know request from one person. That cost included $189,195.16 of internal district costs and $166,780.12 of external legal costs associated with 29 separate right to know requests containing 886 individual search terms with an average of 30.6 items per request and $22,248.46 per week expenses on the right to know from one person. Posting right to knows on the district website. Some of the information based on solicitor feedback was we could put the data requests in a mere quester, types of record requested, number of subparts and estimated cost to process. Next slide. Top five request are based on the number of requests. We have 72 from the number one requister, then 22, 14, 11 and three from the number five most requested. Conversely, if you look at the cost illegal, again, this is where Dr. Zerby is saying, this is actually the billed amounts that come in from July 1st through April 30th. Those costs total $867,051.60. Requester number one totaled $725,055.68. Where requestor number five totals $4,930.20. Now, requestor one and requestor, requestor five and the requestor five on the number account and the requestor five on the dollar should not have to line up. I'm just giving you based on the rankings of those numbers. Next slide.
That is the last slide, Mr. Bricker.
I'm sorry. Yep, that is the last slide. Sorry about that. So any questions on this information?
Yeah, questions, comments from members of the board. I, I think that, you know, before, before we take those, it's, it's important to understand that, you know, this is the most up-to-date information that we, that we have available. It, it certainly indicates that, you know, we have It, it certainly indicates that, you know, we have a very challenging situation in front of us. And this is, this is certainly not new information in terms of the board understanding the, the fact that we've had some challenges along the way from as early as June, July through, through now. But in, in, in every, in every aspect, the administration has made a number of different modifications, working with the solicitor to, a, follow the, the rules associated with the right to know process and by making modifications to, one, reduce costs, to reduce effort. And we, we have, we have not succeeded to this point in, in getting this under control. So comments from members of the board at this point. Ms. Aubrey Larsonese?
Yeah, I, I think it would be worth finding out. Our law firm that handles our right to know requests also handles that type of request and services for other districts. So I'd be interested to see, obviously, a lot of that is privileged information, but I'd, I'd be interested to see where Methacton ranks in comparison to other districts using the same firm. I, I know anecdotally, from talking to the solicitor, that we, we are an outlier. This is definitely an anomaly. There is something very unique to Methacton and the types of right to know requests that are filed here has very little to do with our law firm and has very little to do with our process. But again, I'd like to have the solicitor speak to that rather than just rely on, on my recollection of conversations that I've had with the solicitor. I've been really reluctant to bring this up in a public meeting because I do believe in the spirit and the intent of the right to know law. I think it's an important function of government that we can have access to documents, that we have access to information. It's, it's part of the checks and balances, and I, I do believe it's important. But I also believe that there is an intent to right to know law that, that does not necessarily align with the right to know requests that we see in our district. And, and that, I think, is, is where we run into a problem. And I, I personally have racked my brain trying to figure out what could we possibly do in terms of putting more information out there so that we don't have right to know requests. You know, when a right to know request comes in for, you know, a presentation or a document that's discussed at a board meeting, but those are not the problems that, that we're dealing with here. Those are not the issues that, that create this $867,000 problem. It's the requests for any and all correspondence between a board member and the superintendent, between a board member and the, the right to know officer. It's, it's requesting every single email that is exchanged within the district month by month by month by month that adds up. And, and all of those emails need to be reviewed for sensitive information, information that legally cannot be shared with the public. And that, that's what takes up personnel time. It's what, what eats up these legal fees. It's with how we get to where we are here. And short of posting every single email that we ever sent to the district website, which, for the record, I do not recommend or endorse by any stretch, I, I'm really at a loss as to how we get around this because this is one of the situations where the different, there's a difference between what you can request with right to know and what you really should request with right to know. And well, yes, you, you're entitled to request our emails. But I, I question to what end. I, I have yet to see this lead to anything productive. I, I don't, I, I have yet to see anything come forward where, you know, there, there was information that was in an email that, that should have been shared with the public, that wasn't. I, it, it just, it's not happening. So I guess I've just, I'm at a loss and I'm frustrated. You know, I look at that $167,000 and I think of how many teachers and textbooks we could, we could pay for with that money. And it's, it's a real shame to see that we've come to this.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. McGess?
Yeah, I just want to kind of go point by, not point by point, please, a couple of questions. So if you go back to slide four, I think it was, I had some questions there. So on average, Tim, where was the assessed value? Was that like 3250? What, what was the average assessed value for Methacton? Do you remember?
About $350,000.
So let's call it, so every household in Methacton throws in $120 into the hat for right to know each year, each year. Am I reading this correctly?
That's a fair estimate.
Okay, go to slide five, please. So the, the average right to know request, it, it comes in with, you said 29 separated right to know requests. And of those 29, eight, those 29 had basically 886 parts, like, is that what you're saying in this slide?
That's correct.
Okay, so we'll get a right to know request that basically sends us on a goose chase. Is that fair to say?
Yes.
Okay, and the posting the right to know requests on the district website, this is what we're allowed to post moving forward. We've kind of got this cleared. And I saw Kyle on the call earlier. I, I guess he dropped off.
He was on for this special meeting, based on conversations that we had at the finance committee meeting in terms of, you know, how can we provide, you know, greater transparency to the challenge that we're having. It was, it was suggested that we figure out what can we put on the district website that would help inform people. Our solicitor then suggested these items here. It's certainly not limited to this, but these are the ones that he, he suggested.
Okay, and that's something we're going to, do we have to vote on that? Or we just kind of, is that what tonight's discussion is? Or are we going to do an all-in-favor of putting this on the website?
Well, I think that we, we don't have any items for voting here this evening. But what we could do by the time we end our conversation on this, on this matter, we could make a, a recommendation so that the board president and I could put an item on the agenda for consideration about what we want to put on and how often and all that kind of stuff. So if any member has a recommendation of how we want to address it, it would be, you know, sent either, either said tonight or sent before, I would say before Friday afternoon that we would have it to put on the agenda for consideration next week.
Okay, that's fair. And just going back to this slide, Tim, you're pretty explicit. This is from August 10th, 2020 to November 30th, 2020. And that's when we got the, let's call it the 886-part exam. That, that's the timeframe, correct?
Yes.
And, and I heard one of the questioners from the last meeting, you know, say that it's about your appeals process. It's about this, it's about that. And the other thing I heard is, what are you trying to hide? So could you go back to the slide that had the year-over-year bar graph? And this is from 17 to 21, call it four years. I don't even know, want to do the math of what we paid. It, it's pretty ridiculous. If Kyle were here, I'd ask him, but Dr. Zerbi, I'm going to kind of put you on the podium. Were we hiding with all these right to know requests? Any, I don't know, any kickback schemes revealed?
Not that I'm aware of.
Any pay-to-play bad contracts revealed?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, any malfeasance, anything we're hiding?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so basically, over the last four years, we've paid for nothing. We've paid for nothing.
Well, we paid legal fees.
That got, got, I hear you.
Yeah.
Play along. That got us nothing. It, it got us nothing. And then we want to compare what we've paid on nothing. And again, don't get me wrong, I'm not saying all of them. I understand when somebody who lost a bid wants to know what the bid results were. I understand that. I support that. When somebody who wants to know if someone working on the school is, is paying prevailing wage because that's what they paid in their bid, I 100% support those. Those are easy. But if we look at it on a percentage basis, we've paid for nothing. And each year, every household throws a, what was it, buck 40, buck 20? I forget what it was, in, in the hat for nothing. So this isn't about some appeals process. Oh, by the way, we have to go to those appeals so we can protect the, the district. That's kind of the, the nine of us signed up for that. That's part of what we have to do here. So to sit here and spin it that it has something to do with the appeals process and not the root cause that we have 886-part right to know requests in five months is ridiculous. And for the record, I want everything on the website. I want names, I want dates, I want people to see what these goose chases look like. So that's where I'm coming from. So thank you for playing along, Dr. Zerbi.
Welcome. Ms. Reese?
My only question, and I, I should have asked this, or when I looked at this earlier today or yesterday, whenever you sent it, was, I think we were given, what, the average district? How many right to know requests they're given? Or weren't, didn't we have that somewhere? But wasn't it like, this is very unusual and the Office of Open Records is aware that this is very unusual?
I, I think what might be, what, what Ms. Aubrey Larsonese said earlier, without me quoting something that I don't have the figures in front of me, it might be worth having as part of our conversation next week when our solicitor is on the call. Because if we provided that information to the board at any point in time, it would have likely have been through him to you so that you understood the, the, the dynamics associated with the matter.
And that's fair. I just did want, I, I, that's fair, but I just, I don't know if.
It's unusual. The, the answer is, it's, it's, you know, we're in an unusual situation. That's, that's correct. But, but the actual figures, I don't know, I don't know what they offer off the top of my head.
And maybe, and maybe it's not necessary. You guys did a, a nice job. Maybe there needs to be a footnote or something that says the average in Montgomery. Some, we were, just something so that, you know, when someone says, well, how come you didn't handle this better or differently? It's unusual. So it's like, it's not like this is a precedent. So anyway, thank you for this and I, you know, I, I kind of back everything.
Let, let me just add just a little bit more to that. So I'm, I'm assuming everyone can still see the screen. You know, the, the, the evidence is in the, the line here from right to know. In 2017, 18, it was this cost and there were certain, you know, requests during that period of time compared to what they are now. So the, the, the numbers here speak for something is different and unusually different.
And I would reiterate that, just that this is somewhat unique to our district right now.
Mr. Navarre?
David, can you go back one slide? So number two. I guess, you know, listen, I think everybody looks at this and sees the same thing. This is, this is untenable. Just at a high level here, I'm going to make a request that we keep this in front of the finance committee. Maybe, maybe not monthly, but at least quarterly at minimum so that we can keep apprised of where we are with these. I know certainly, given the involvement of that with the Shenandoah case that, you know, I know I'm up to speed on what we've spent directly on that legislation, but I think that's important to break out. It's probably also important to break out, you know, we had, we had a, we had a lawsuit and an injunction hearing related to Arrowhead, right? We want to talk about shams. We don't, we need to know what the number is associated with that. Right, I believe it was around, I don't know, $15,000 or something that we had to spend related to that. Is that right?
That's just, that's just on legal fees. That doesn't include my time and other people's time as well.
Right, that you were, that you spent working on a, on a legal case instead of, instead of on the future of our district. So I, I think that needs to be broken out in this document for next week as well because it's important to see where this money is being wasted. If we go forward, I'll come back to Drew's point. We go back to slide five. And we look at non-standard requests. I, I don't even mind when, and I shouldn't, right? I'll, I'll say this, much as Kim said before, I think this is, this is one of those things that's, that's critically important for proper functioning of our government, checks and balances. And honestly, you know, like Kim, I don't want to go anywhere with this because I think this is one of the most fundamental things of the Freedom of Information Act and the right to know laws across our country, help pull information out of government that need to be in the public eye. So, you know, even when we talk about pulling emails over periods, it's fine, right? I mean, that, this, this is, this is what needs to be done. My issue with these requests that are coming in, these multi-part requests, is that they're no longer even about documents. They're no longer even about, you know, an arrowhead or a budget. They're now about the last request that was submitted. The right to know requests about a right to know request, that's about a right to know request before. In some cases, we have literally been on the third derivative of a right to know request. And we're reproducing documents and they've all got to go through lawyers. It is a colossal waste of our time and our resources and our money, our taxpayers' money as a district. It is disingenuous for people to come to these meetings and yell about wasting money when they are the source of the waste of that money. Let's make sure that we keep this in front of the finance committee because this needs to continue to be in the public eye.
We can do that. Other comments, Ms. Drummond?
Yeah, I, on, on this slide, and, and you alluded to it before about the hours and the time and the staff time, your, your time, your staff's time. And so I, I'm guessing that this $189,000 is sort of an estimate of, of staff time. Is that what it is? But, but can you just speak a little bit? What I'm interested in hearing is, is about, is about the time spent, is about what that does to the staff who is, is, you know, focusing on this and not the other duties for which they were hired.
So maybe, maybe, Mr. Regina, if you don't mind just, you know, just giving us an idea of the, the, the types of, of, of people, not names, but the types of people that do work on these processes. So it's, you know, we have technology people, we have secretaries, we, you, you know, just give the board an idea.
Certainly. We, certainly when the first one come, when a right to know comes in, of course, it, it goes through our office. My eyes are on it, or Dr. Sorgeni's eyes are on it. It goes to an individual that documents all that for us and pupil services, a person that we use for halftime to assist with the clerical support of right to know. We utilize our technology staff for email searches and documents in which could be embedded in folders that have existed over time, based on what year we're necessarily looking for that document. We utilize a number of our invoices that we pool. We, our solicitor invoices are paper copy. So it requires us to go through the files of every paper copy that we receive in invoices, which takes time out of Tim's department to search for all the copies of a specific title based on the request. We have individuals that are requesting items for student information and, and some, most of that has to be redacted. But there are elements that we do need to share when it comes to certain information based on some demographic information that's more of a general consensus. We have into the technology business, the school buildings, we have individuals that ask for schedules and things of that matter. So it, it really is all encompassing of the district. But I would say in the most part, based on what we're referring to, our business office, our technology office, and, and our right to know office, it takes care of the lion's share of, of most of this time.
Thank you. And, and so did, and I heard you say in the beginning of when you were speaking that we have a clerical halftime employee devoted to the right to know.
That's correct. That individual assists us with just clerical support. As you can imagine, when you see that many documents, tracking that information has become exceedingly more difficult over time. So it's been very helpful to have that individual with us.
And if I can just interject for one second, Liz, Shay, that, that expense is not included in the summary, is it?
Not, not, it's not included in these numbers here. This, this is, this is the last slide. It's total legal cost, right to know billed. This is only legal cost.
Only legal costs, yeah.
Only legal cost.
Thank you.
The, the example here was, was, was an actual period of time as we indicate. And we had a time study done on it, and this is what the staff costs were internally, a technology secretary, administrative, and so forth, for the associated request plus the legal cost.
Yeah, great. Thank you. I'm glad, thank you for pointing that out.
Other questions, comments from members of the board? So what I would, what I would suggest then, I don't know if this is just. So what I would what I would suggest then, I don't know if this is just Mr. McGinnis or anyone, you know, I would I would ask you to. Either speak tonight and say exactly what we want, if you want something on the website, or if you want to, you know, compose your thoughts and get those to. The Madam President, and we can then discuss them on Friday when we we do have a normal meeting and decide how to. You know, to compose the the agenda item if there is one needed. That's.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I I was gonna say it's it's late and this is a lot. So I think your idea of us sharing with Kim individually and then. Having a little bit more of discussion next week because there's not as many presentations next week.
Right, okay. Then then let's do that and we'll make sure that Kyle's prepared to speak to what 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 I think was suggested he he talk about. In terms of comparisons between other districts that he serves. Is there any other any other questions related to this matter? Seeing none, I'm going to move back into the work session agenda. Next week, we have the M Awards, we have the Methacton Award of Excellence, and we have retirement recognition. We'll have reports and but before I go on too much further here, I want to. I'm just going to stop sharing the screen for a second and just bring a matter to your attention. And I'm actually going to read from a letter that I sent to the Superintendent of North Penn School District. On May seventeenth of two thousand twenty-one. And it reads as follows, Dear Dr. Curtis Dietrich and the North Penn School District Community. A superintendent of the Methacton School District, I want to take this opportunity to apologize to the students, players, families, staff and fans. Of the North Penn School District and the Methacton School District for the unprofessional behavior displayed by a Methacton volunteer coach. During a men's varsity lacrosse game on Friday, May fourteenth. Please know that the matter has been addressed. And the behavior of the Methacton Volunteer Coach in no manner reflects the values of competitive sportsmanship. Nor the values of our Methacton School District community. I further wish the very best for the North Penn School District and Methacton School District lacrosse programs for the remainder of the school season. If are there any questions on on that matter? I think that's been, you know, rather pretty public at to this point. Certainly, there's been some news stories put together from the. The North Penn area. We 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 address the matter immediately. And I want to thank Dr. Sorgini, Dr. Spiewack and Mr. Regina for their their support on getting to. The end of of that particular matter. Because of because of the type of matter that it is, there's not much else I could say other than. I I I'll try to answer any questions if you have them at this point in time. Ms. Purdue.
Are you able to speak to how the matter was addressed? I mean, I know you sent a letter off. But what else did we do? Are you able to speak to any part of it?
Mr. Regina.
Unfortunately, it would be a matter of personnel that I wouldn't recommend that we speak about in at the meeting tonight.
Um, I'm sorry, Ms. Purdue. I I know that's not the response you were looking for.
I just know it's been a topic of discussion and even yesterday it was a topic of many discussions and I think. I know I know it's confidential, but I think there's ways to still bring it so people know how. Some situations to a certain level, how things are being addressed because we can't say it's just being addressed because. I don't think that's sufficient all the time. I don't think we can use that all the time to say it's being addressed, right? A letter was sent out, but is that it is? I just. I and I'm just speaking my opinion. I just don't feel like that's enough to say what's addressed.
I I I understand that and and I I don't disagree with your comment. I I. I I can't I. I can't give away to say what I what you want to hear that that is going to not keep all of us out of trouble. And that's why I just can't.
You don't have to. I do just want to.
Let's just say, let let me just say this. I could I can say this, that this 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 will. This should not happen again with this individual of. That 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 I that I can say. That's as much as that's as much as I'll say. Mr. Winters.
Yeah, so let me just ask a broader question. So a volunteer coach is something that. I don't didn't. I guess I probably should have known, but I didn't really know that we had those before. So I wonder what jurisdiction we have over volunteer coaches and is it something that we're going to look in a broader sense? And I don't mean to ask, you know, there's probably a great value and Drew could probably correct me on on how it's used in. All types of sports. I understand that. But I'm just curious, when I heard volunteer coach. I makes me wonder, we're in like a no man's land around what we can do as a district from a responsibility.
Yeah, so so the the volunteer coach is similar to the volunteers that we have and the approval process that we have for. Other volunteers in the district. And we have been using volunteer coaches in a number of different sports, but they go through the approval process. You know, do all the the background checks, all the things that are required to become a volunteer in the district. And they are subject to all the rules associated with the being a volunteer. And, you know, they are subject to then the removal of their right to be a volunteer if things might occur. That require us to remove them. Other questions on the on the matter? Seeing no other questions. We move back to the agenda. And we see that there's some advisements on on this agenda for your your review. We'll take public comment on board action items. We'll we'll do all those matters. Fiscal items, Mr. Bicker.
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. This month for the board's approval, we have the list of bills, treasurer's report, budgetary transfers. A motion for the insurance carrier to approve the insurance carrier and premium of two hundred twenty-six thousand one hundred two dollars. Provided by Willis Towers Watson. This reflects an increase of twelve thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars from the prior year. We also have the extension of the Keystone Agreement, which will be to approve the amendment for an extension. Of the agreement with Keystone Royalty Virus for a term ending August first, two thousand twenty-two. And to be clear, it is only an extension. There are no term changes with regards to the Keystone Agreement.
Any questions for Mr. Bicker on any of the fiscal matters? Seeing no questions, move on to matters of personnel. Dr. Sorgini.
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. Good evening. For your consideration this month, we have the following personnel items. Two resignations professional, both of which are for retirement. We thank Mrs. Gail Brown for her twenty-eight years of service to the students of Methacton School District. And Mrs. Michelle Sinnett for her thirty-five years of service to the students of Methacton School District. And we wish Gail and Michelle both all the very best in their retirement. We have two resignations classified, one of which is for retirement upcoming in August. We thank Mr. Benny Horn for his twenty years of service to Methacton School District and wish him well in his retirement. We have one employment administrator to recommend. That after a search process which included four rounds of interviews incorporating members of a multitude of stakeholder groups. Across our school district community, I'm pleased to recommend to the Board of School Directors for Approval, Mr. William Brannick. For the position of Director of Technology, Mr. Brannick has for the past seven years. Served as the Director of Technology for the Archdiocese of Philadelphia School System. Which encompasses seventeen secondary schools, four schools of special education and one hundred and two elementary schools. Prior to serving as Director of Technology, Mr. Brannick served for nine years. As the Principal of Monsignor Bonner and Archbishop Prendergast High School. And Mr. Brannick has presented both locally and nationally on topics related to school leadership in the digital age. He holds a Bachelor's of Arts degree from Penn State University, a Master's of Science degree from Newman University. And a certificate in cybersecurity from the Massachusetts Institute of Technology. And we're excited to welcome him and look forward to his innovative technology leadership. We have one employment classified, which is in the collective bargaining unit. This is an already existing fully budgeted position. That became available as a result of other movements within the Teamsters organization. We have one change of status administrative. Once again, after a search process that included four rounds of interviews incorporating representatives of multiple stakeholder groups across our school district. I'm pleased to recommend to the board a change of status for Dr. Jamie Graveney's. Officially from Supervisor of Secondary Special Education to the position of Principal of Methacton High School. Dr. Graveney has served as a professional educator in the Methacton School District for the past seventeen years. Most recently as the interim principal of Methacton High School since February of this year. Dr. Graveney began her career at Methacton as a teacher of English. Before becoming a school administrator and serving in the positions of high school assistant principal and then supervisor of secondary special education. She holds a bachelor's degree from St. Joseph's University, a master's of science from Villanova University. A doctorate in education from Gwinnett Mercy University. And a superintendent's letter of eligibility also from Gwinnett Mercy. And we look forward to Dr. Graveney's continued leadership at the high school. We have one change of status classified. This is a replacement position based on a retirement. One uncompensated leave professional, one uncompensated leave classified. And then a series of supplemental contracts is outlined on the agenda. The first three are identified as retroactive. The freshman baseball coach involved an in-season coaching resignation that had to be addressed. The approval for Cheryl Pfeiffer and Kathy Thompson to serve as nurses at the senior prom this coming Friday. Is identified as retroactive because the prom takes place between the work session. And the action meeting of the Board of School Directors. The remainder are for future worker positions, and this includes the recommendation of Ms. Tori Rosa for the position of Girls Varsity Swimming Coach. Once again, after a series of interview rounds directed this time by Dr. Spiewack. Which included multiple stakeholder groups, including student athletes and parents. I'm pleased to recommend to you Ms. Tori Rosa for the swimming girls varsity swimming position. Ms. Rome Rosa, rather, is a lifelong swimmer. Having swam competitively from childhood through the collegiate level at Indiana University of Pennsylvania. She's coached for the past fifteen years, including directing the Methacton Aquatic Club for the past six years. And we look forward to many years of Ms. Rose's inspired leadership with our student athletes as varsity swimming coach. Although not on the agenda this evening, we have completed the interview process for the position of varsity football coach. I'll be working with Dr. Spiewack and our hope is to put forward our finalist on the agenda for next week, so please stay tuned for that. We have one addition to the classified substitute list. And three volunteers to add to the list of approved Methacton volunteers for your approval.
Thank you, Dr. Sorgini. Questions from members of the board? Ms. Reese?
Um, I'm going to work my way up, but you answered my high school football question. So thank you because I had heard that you were close and. So we we could. It looks like hopefully it'll be on next week, right? That's what you said. Okay, that's all that cross that off the list. Um, I wanted to acknowledge, um, Dr. Graveney's just. I knew, you know, I was not part of the interview process as I think I was PSA facilitating during one of those days. But anyway. I knew that she she had worked her way through. Methacton, but to but to hear seventeen years, I just, as an educator, love to hear that we kind of. You know, you you want to help your 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 staff grow and that's a perfect example from assistant to stepping into Director of Special Education and then stepping in for you. So. I I I that's that's exciting to see our a staff member grow in our district. So that's nice to see on the agenda. Um, Mr. Brannick, did I miss probably a start? Oh, July one. I missed that. Okay, so. Um, July one, there we go. And the other one was, I wanted a question based on Dr. You don't have to move up. Dr. Zerbi's advisement, you know, Sarah Kane, another Methacton alum, woo-hoo, moving from Arcola to. Uh, the high school. So, you know, we were waiting to hear about the foreign language changes at Arcola, how it's going. Um, it's already a challenge to fill those positions, so it's nice that Ms. Kane can move into the high school and fill that position. But now I'm worried about filling. Our cola. That doesn't. I'm thrilled for Ms. Kane. So. That adds a whole nother level because that person needs to be able to handle. The hundreds of middle school students and that. Schedule of, you know, every other day and those kinds of things. So I assume we're working hard on that.
We are, Ms. Reese. We've actually already begun the interview process for both the. French and Spanish teaching positions and we are moving into the second round next week.
Awesome. Thank you so much for everything this busy, busy night for you.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Other questions for Dr. Sorgini on personal items? Ms. Drummond?
I just want to thank you, Dr. Sorgini, for just sharing a bit about the candidate's credentials and bio at, you know, here at the work session, just so we. Have a sense. I just wanted to thank. I thought that was nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Drummond. Any other comments, questions for Dr. Sorgini? Going once, twice. All right, we'll move on to next item curriculum. Dr. Walsh, I know there's nothing on the agenda. Do you have anything to comment on tonight?
No, Dr. Zerbi, nothing this time.
Okay, I just wanted to give you an opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
Policy. Policy, Mr. Regina?
No major additions here or major changes to the items. Probably the largest one would be. Policy two thirty-one with social events and class trips. We've extended that to seven to twelve, which was once a nine to twelve restriction. But all others were minor modifications to all the other policies.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Regina on matters of policy? Seeing none. Under other, no gifts or trips, we we've been advised by the Solicitor that the election of the Board Treasurer and. The election of the Board Secretary need to take place this month. So we have added those to the agenda. Any questions about either of those two items? Seeing none. The next item we have is employment contracts and plans. And these would be the items listed. The board does have possession of the red line. The two outstanding red line agreements. And if I get some feedback before Friday, I can have those, you know. Answer whatever questions needed and then post these live for Saturday at seven o'clock. The Health and Safety Plan update. So this really is to is designed to address the the summer work for all our adults. But it also takes into consideration the fact that some of our work as adults also means that we're working with students during the 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 period of time. Periods of time in the summer. So with that said, the the summary of this is is that. We want to be able to provide for, under the CDC recommendations. That vaccinated individuals could indoors and outdoors be required to not mask or social distance as it's currently outlined by the CDC. But in the instance that we are working with students and primarily we'll be working with students. At at Skyview Upper Elementary School and Dr. Walsh. In some of our elementary schools will be having kindergarten, the kindergarten program, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, so those in in the instances that we're working with children, the children will recommending at this time that the children be masked. And we maintain the three foot distance and the adults be masked with the and the three feet distance. So that's on for your consideration for next week. It's a it's a lot and and I and I wrote it in a way that also allows us to. To implement this and implement something that will that if it does change in the meantime. We can consider the change and and implement it appropriately. As as an example, we got called into a meeting, I want to say we, the superintendents of Montgomery County got called into a meeting Friday afternoon. With the Montgomery County Department of Health and they were letting us know that, you know, they're they're following the PA Department of Health and the CDC recommendations and. And the whole masking thing was about ready to to blow and and, you know, we had to make a determination. At that moment in time, whether or not we were going to stay the course. Or, you know, try to figure out who's vaccinated, who is not vaccinated, who is willing to stay in school with unvaccinated people, with vaccinated people, with masks on or with masks off. And I'm sounding a little ridiculous in my comments, but that's exactly what all the that's what I was spinning around everyone's head. Because, you know, how do you? How do you manage that that chaos? And and still maintain, you know, progress forward towards the end of the. And and still maintain, you know, progress forward towards the end of the school year? Are there any questions on the Health and Safety Plan Update? Ms. Reese?
Um, I'll make it quick, but I I think we all understand why this is in place. You know, we we understand children are, you know, are still at risk and things like that. Is the is the thought that the adults wearing the masks, is that more do we in respect to the fact that the children are wearing masks?
It's it's what it's what's actually, it's what the county's recommending. Uh, that's, yeah. I I, your point's well taken. I didn't consider it that way. Uh, I I basically what I'm what I'm suggesting is what we're being told we ought to do.
No, that's fine. I I have not been able to keep up with all the requirements. And so I I'm glad you, as superintendent, meet with people to help you, and I know I'm glad we have Cheryl Pfeiffer to to help us. So that's fine. I just, I think we all understand that this is what for now has to be done until we're told otherwise. I just was, I just was, you know. We all know that adults right now are in a different position than children, but that doesn't matter right now because we all work with children. So thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Any other questions or comments on this matter? All right, and then then I'll turn the meeting back over to Madam President for dates on board members' calendars and the rest of the agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. Before we move forward, I just had it called out to me. In looking at the agenda, we are missing our second reading policies. Um, it looks like we have all the policies for our first read, but we do have meet some that were on the agenda last month that should have been moved to a second read this month.
So we could, we'll make those corrections for next week's meeting. Sorry about that.
No, that's okay. We have some keen eyes on our board keeping track of these things.
That was Ms. Hall, by the way, I imagine. Sorry, I didn't mean to call you out. I guess I just did, huh?
I I just wanted to make sure I was looking at the correct version. All good, we can fix it for next week.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Um, all right, so we have our dates for board members' calendars. Um, does anyone have anything for old business? Anything for new business? All right, so courtesy of the floor, we require members that wanting to make comments during courtesy of the floor to pre-register. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand four minutes and introduce yourself with your name and municipality. So first up, I have Mr. John Andrews. Mr. Andrews, whenever you're ready.
John Andrews, Lower Providence. The want to address some comments to how prepared we are to vote on full-day kindergarten. I did a study, oh, a year, year and a half ago relative to full-day kindergarten. I found out that the worst school district in the state in Harrisburg, but after they switched from half-day kindergarten to full-day kindergarten, there was no improvement in PSSA scores in grade three. And then we have one of the best school districts nearby that switched from half-day kindergarten to full-day kindergarten, and that's the Radnor School District. The first two years of grade three PSSA scores there showed a significant drop in the number of advanced proficient scores. Uh, and and basically a small improvement in the below basic. And significantly, when they studied the children in kindergarten that were the young, in the youngest month, 61% of those students needed special education activity. So that puts a question to, is age five to 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 get into kindergarten the right age? In Newton, Massachusetts, there was a major upheaval because the teachers, something like 45 kindergarten teachers addressed the board with major problems in in their full-day kindergarten activities. They were expecting too much from the students. And that received a national attention in several major magazines. And the, they had a some kind of a booklet describing the the kindergarten course program. It was, I don't know, like 40 pages long that, you know, it seemed like an overriding emphasis on on academic proficiency. And the superintendent ended up quitting or retiring or leaving. And locally here, there's talk about the social and economic, not economic, I'm sorry, the social, emotional, and academic aspects. Uh, and the academic, then another word was used cognitively. But I think that one of the big issues in kindergarten is developmental. And when you see a, when you look through the the ice in a pond in the in April or March or April, and you see polywogs swimming around, they're not like the frogs that they turn into in in subsequent months. Uh, so I I think that when we had T1, and if anyone doesn't know what that is, I could, I could answer that. But when we had T1.
Wrap it up, please.
It I think it aided the children who developmentally weren't doing well in in kindergarten. And that was something like 10% of the student population.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Next, I have Brian Earnshaw.
Uh, thank you, Brian Earnshaw, Lower Providence. First, Dr. Sodgeni, when you went through the personal items, that was a lot of fantastic information there. You answered a lot of the questions I had. Explaining why some items were retroactive, the purpose of supplemental contracts, that was just very informative, and I appreciate that. On the full-day kindergarten discussion, you know, Mr. Winters commented that there'll be like maybe future cost savings if full-day kindergarten is implemented. And Mr. Navaret also commented that the taxpayer could benefit by, you know, increased home values, increased assessment values, et cetera. Can either of you quantify those, or is that just an anecdotal belief that you have? And if you can quantify it, are any of those numbers built into Mr. Bicker's projections? Regarding the right-to-know request, I'm glad to see that it's, you know, finally being considered. Here we are, a month and a half to go in the fiscal year, and it's just now being addressed. I know that Ms. Aubrey Larcenyce, you said that, you know, you became aware of this in your discussions with Dr. Zerby early on. I wonder if you brought that information to the board. Did any of the board members see these costs in the financials that you get monthly? Ms. Aubrey Larcenyce, did you take any actions? If not, why? If yes, what was done? As far as the top five requesters, has the Board of the Administration spoken to them directly or met with them? And tried to understand why they're making so many requests and try to explain to them what costs are being incurred to get to the root cause of the problem? You know, I think that that might help. I will tell you that I think part of this might be self-inflicted from the standpoint of the Board of the Administration. I know I was trying to get information on legal fees, seeing all the costs in the list of bills. And it took a right-to-know request to get the information. Nobody answered my questions at these meetings. Nobody responded by emails. At one point, I think Mr. Bicker said he wanted that information, file a right-to-know request. So that's what I did. And I got a copy of the presentation, you know, 50% of what was presented tonight in advance of it being posted in the website. So I was able to see that. But I had to file a right-to-know request to do it. And if you would have just answered my question, I wouldn't have filed a right-to-know request. The other thing to take into consider is, you know, these costs are continue. Yo, is it, it's cheaper to hire a paralegal to be your right-to-know officer? Somebody who knows the law can address this. You might spend $100,000, but you're going to save $700,000. You know, it's just, I I don't understand. I mean, posting it to the website, I don't know what that's going to do. I think you're trying to shame the requester. That would be like me, if you're not answering my question, posting your individual cell phone numbers on the somewhere so people can call you directly and get an answer. I I don't think that, I don't think that's appropriate. I don't know if there's any privacy concerns there, but I think that's a bad idea, and I don't think that's going to get you anywhere. So I think you got to come up with some other actions, trying to get these costs under control, like meet with the top five requesters, answer questions you get via email, answer questions at a board meeting. And if you have to, hire a person. You know, you might spend something on a salary, but it's going to cut $700,000 legal costs. It's just, you get, start thinking about how can you address these costs? You know, rather than, you know, and I didn't hear anything like that discussed tonight. And I know, Mr. McGinnis, you got angry, you know, and so forth. The Mr. Navaret is concerned. That's great, but, you know, you got to get to the root cause of this because it is a waste of money and has no educational benefit whatsoever. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and that concludes our courtesy of the floor. Do we have any closing comments from the board? No, I have a couple of things that I would like to address. Mr. Winters?
Uh, I I'd like to address the full-day kindergarten. I do not have a financial number. I think that if you were, if you listen to the context of the conversation that we were having, it was for both comments that were made tonight. It was around the social, emotional, and not the academic aspect of the kindergarten. And it was the, it was setting the stage for them to be lifelong learners at an earlier stage with Methacton's influence and ability to provide the interventions of the children not ready for going into kindergarten as early. Dr. Uker did a fantastic job of explaining what, if you were listening to the conversation, why we're doing this and the context of it was. So the $1.3 million that I mentioned and some dollar savings, I do believe there will be a dollar saving. Can I quantify it? No, because it's based on the context of of what we're trying to do and why we're trying to do it. So I cannot give you a number. You got me. But I think the context of what we're trying to do and the dollar savings will come, I believe. And at the very least, even if there is no dollar savings, I believe, most importantly, the reason we're doing this is we believe this will be more, allow our students to be more successful to go through a full-day kindergarten and have 13 good years of Methacton and become, you know, lifelong learners their whole life. So that's the context. I can't give you the math, and I stand by not being able to give you the math. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winters. I did also want to speak to the right-to-know process a little bit. The question was raised of whether or not we've spoken to the right-to-know requesters. I I know Mr. Bicker named the top five in his presentation, but it, I mean, it was really pretty clear that it was the number one that was the issue. And yes, we have had direct one-on-one conversations with this requester to try to address this matter. Um, we have had, we've tried a lot of different avenues, I will say that. And the the question was raised about, you know, requests for presentations and, you know, information that has been sought through emails. And sometimes the information that is sought through emails is much more specific than the things that we have available to us readily as board members. And sometimes the most expedient way to do that, to address those questions, is through a right-to-know request. Those right-to-know requests are not the problem. The cost of those right-to-know requests is de minimis. It's not what's what's driving this cost and driving this this expense. You know, it's, as we spoke about earlier, it's the right-to-know requests that are, to Mr. Navaret's point, you know, the third derivation of a right-to-know request, where the requester is looking for proof that we received their right-to-know request, proof that we executed their right-to-know request, proof that we received that right-to-know request, and and so on. And that, those are the the problems that we're we're dealing with. So I I guess maybe that wasn't made clear earlier, but hopefully it is now. So if anyone has anything else to add or not, Mr. McGinnis, do I have?
Who's adjourned?
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. Everyone have a great night.